Working on it.
Okay, Counselor Carlson. Counselor Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, I appreciate that. First of all, I'm not looking at this through the lens of status quo. Because status quo means we have the same, our hands are tied for a long time and all that. I'm looking at this as a three-year game plan. And as stated in my questions earlier, in 2028, we'll have a lot more options on what we can do with this building. So that's why I'm coming from not... So you used the word viable. And viable means success. If you look up the definition, success and all that. But when you look at the four options, when you bring them up there, if someone can bring that slide up there, option one, option two, option three, and option four, Mr. Westerson, if you can. Thank you. Option four, city service reductions. How can that be viable?
So, thank you, Counselor. I'm Parker. So it is viable from the sense council can ask us to do this, and we can reduce it. And the hard part for then, for the community is, as you're keeping those, having to maintain the pressure cooker, in my mind, on the actual services for that. That is the question of whether it remains viable in the longer term. That's why you hear in my comments when I were going through the narrative on it, that the risk on those scenarios, and we've seen this in the past, is that the community is used to a certain level of service. And when that service gets reduced, typically, you don't notice right away until you, as an individual, realize that service is cut, then they were looking back. So councils have a hard time to maintain, to reduce services in that way.
Okay, and maybe you can go to the next slide with the little river. Has a little water and all that.
River and water.
It has little, it has like this one, right?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Yeah, the water, it looks like a road.
That's right.
So, and if we went to number four, you could have major consequences to each one of those, specifically even, for example, police or fire. Am I correct?
That is correct. And that's why in the comments there, what I've, what I said is that we wouldn't recommend doing an across-the-board reduction. I know that's quite common, that we hear that in the public. If council really wanted to do service reduction, we would need time to have targeted service reductions as well. Or we'd need to have targeted service reductions in areas.
And so those, the community be getting punished technically for something that the LED board decided, well, I won't go there, but, and technically, okay. So I want to go to number three then. Option number three, and this is the one where I'm leaning towards, is when you have reserves BAUs, well, not so much BAUs are not really used for this, but you have contingencies for rainy days. Would you define this as a rainy day?
Well, put it this, yes. It is a rainy day. However, the one, the only thing that's the difference on this, and maybe this, you know, so I'm going to qualify the flip of that is, so although it's a rainy day, it's going to rain for a long period of time. And what we know today is that, that ongoing, these, some of these costs are ongoing for a considerable period of time. And that's why we still wouldn't use the one.
Perfect, and that's where it comes back to what, I'm coming full circle here. So obviously, being someone who, technically, the citizens own this building. They own the building now. And they're like, wow, this, this really isn't really good, it's not very feasible. But you're telling me in the rainy day over the horizon, there is a bit of sun in that, in 2028, our hands won't be tied. This is an opportunity for us to probably divest ourselves, subdivide, break it off, possibly get an ROI on something like this. Is that a possibility from going back, looking, when in regards to the, not the covenant, but the restrictions that are on it right now?
So, in regards to the restrictions coming off, there could be some sunlight on it, or it could be the center of the hurricane. But I think the reality is, what I mean by that is, yes, there's options there, but those options have to be also assessed at the time with other risk factors as well.
And so my, and my last question, I'm going to be blunt here. Right now, my take is, in four years, you subdivide, get rid of it, get out of it, walk away from it. Because you just can't keep on doing it. You just can't camp on leaking money and all that. And even if, and I might get politically crucified at this, even if you sold it on 60 cents on the dollar, someone else can operate, someone else could take it, but we have those options in 2028, right?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Counsel Schmitt-Rempel.
Oh, yeah.
I'm going by my list here, but people are popping in and out. So, sorry, so Counsel Carlson.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, a lot of my questions have been answered, so I've got a couple of quick ones just so I can jot them down. Hurry, go ahead. The bridge picture, when it talks, you don't need to pop them up. When it talks about the future business plan, and, oh, you're going to pop it, oh, nevermind. What is that timeframe? And is that already, is that in this budget? Because I know those things cost money. Is that, it can be prepared next year? Is it in three years? And has it been budgeted for?
So, sorry, I just want to make sure, are you referring to, so are you referring to this slide here in regards to the next pieces of work that's going along here? So this is one of the pieces of work that has the other, has the other resolution from Counselor, or Mayor Higgin, actually. It was from Mayor Higgin, if memory serves. 5.11, is that the one? For actually doing another, some of the other review pieces. Now, keep in mind, that would be where the funding for that would come from. It's not directly within LD's budget for if the city wants to do other work, to continue down on those other options. That's not to say, just going back to Mayor Higgin's comments in regards to a business planning of so forth, the exhibition will do strategic and business planning based on what they know today as their environment. This would be going to the other Deloitte recommendations would be this one.
Okay. But do...
So the answer to your question is, that one needs further funding pieces? And that's what that resolution is for us to report back to do that, which I do have.
So, right now, that is unfunded, and there's no timeframe attached to it.
Correct.
Thank you. If, if we did go with the, we're just going to fund this from reserves, how long till the MRSR is empty? How many years would that give us? Till we're at zero? My guess was three or four, three and a half.
So, if you took off all those, those commitments inside of there, you probably have three or four years if you, if that. Now, that's not quite fair to say, because when we do the forecast, we also don't show the money that's coming in or other surpluses from other areas on that. And additionally, the, on the other options, we're not really looking to take from the MRSR. What we're looking at doing is using the BAUs and carryover. So it's actually the money that's going into the MRSR, not taking out the balance. But, yes, it's a pressure on one-time funding in one way or the other.
Okay, and thank you. And those BAUs.
Correct.
It's not just money that, oh, is just sitting there, and it is money that this council planned for, directed, and it is to be used in, in the budget priorities that this council directed, correct? It just hasn't been spent yet. So we would be, in my mind, sorry, there, Mr. Matthews, in my mind, we would be canceling a whole schwack of stuff if we emptied those BAUs.
So how those, those work in there? And so the short answer is, yes, it's going to have an impact to the departments who are providing the services that are ultimately doing the mandate of council. Those reserve BAU funds and so forth that are inside there are specific aspects. Some of them could be, are, funding for things like Arlac and other areas and so forth are in there. Keeping in mind that there's a large amount of money that we did also have, that we have set aside for this kind of piece. So, i.e., that's why you saw when, when Counsel Schmitt-Rempel asked the question on the dollar figures that are in there, some of it was in there because of the contract, how things got repaid from contract negotiations with, with, on our EMS front. So we had tax dollars that were, that we had paid for, and then, of course, they, they retropaid it back. And so we have that. Normally, that would go to the MS. Now we, or sorry, go back to the reserve, I should say, on that. Now we have those funds that can be actually, those tax dollars that can actually now be reapplied elsewhere as one-time money. If they don't get used here, that's where I was suggesting earlier, that they would either go back to the MRSR or to another reserve that has a pressure.
Thank you. Since, if I can, Mr. Mayor, since last year, when, I think it was Counsel Parker who said, it's been a year now, how much have we already spent? We've, we've cut a bunch of checks already.
Yeah, so bear with me here.
We, we don't ever talk about what we've already invested.
Yes, so actually, that one, if I just, I will have to pull up that in front of you, that number. And I'll, and so let me circle back to that as, and maybe I'll get my, my safety net in the background there to actually pull that up for me faster than I can pull it up. So that would be some of the MOU funding that, that we send in. So I think on November 13th, there was a submission inside there. There is funding that's, that's remaining there. So what would happen to that, just as a, as a longer win piece here on this one? There is going to be funding left over. So if you remember, at the, at the beginning of 2024, council provided emergency funding and an operating grant for $3 million, plus 2 millions of capital. The 2 million of capital is expected that most of that will be almost all used on it. But there is some money left over that's, that is committed in the MRSR. We are starting to draw down on that now. And that's some of the funds that'll be used to maintain it. However, if council makes these recommendations, that commitment will fall off, and then other ones will come on. That's how that would work on it. If not, if council decided to ramp up, that's why we're seeing that money would be exhausted, and that would be the wind-down money, some of the wind-down one-time money that would be actually used to begin winding down the process there.
Thank you. And just if you're getting checks on numbers, the other thing, early in the presentation, you talked about a $32.1 million capital shortfall. I'm assuming that is demolition, parking lot, grandstand?
No. So, so that $32 million and change is actually related to $25.5 million for parking refurbishments and $6.6 million of demolition, which Economic SPC has going through today as a, went through as, I guess, on consent agenda today, as part of the CIP deliberations for next time around. It does not include any future work on or requirements of, of the actual, what do you call it, the Rock Mountain Turf Club area or the grandstand? Yeah, took me a while there to think of that name.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counsel Carlson. Counsel Schmitt-Rempel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And thank you very much for outlining that for us, Mr. Matthews, particularly understanding that those components will go into the next CIP. No, that's okay, I'll let you get your answers there. No, that's a... So, just to understand, status quo that we're asking for right now is $4.1 million, and that will get us through the operations over the next year?
Yes, for each year, there's a $4.1 million to continue operations. That includes also putting money into life cycle and, and city staff to actually maintain that as well.
Okay, but that is $4.1 million for the next year, for 2025?
Correct.
If we're just looking at 2025, $4.1 million.
Yep.
So going back to the presentation, the presentation speaks to service level reductions and impacts. And we've got the slide showing that. So I understand correctly, those were not done strategically? That's just that cut across the board?
That is correct. So that is a, one of the questions that came up was, what would it look like if the $4.1 million had an across-the-board cut for the, for city services? And just proring that based on the percentage of allocation of, of taxes that each of those areas use, that's how those numbers came about.
Okay, but there was no strategy, it was just straight across the board?
Just straight across the board. What would it look like if it was an across-the-board cut based on the taxes that they currently get, each of those departments?
Okay, and that wouldn't start that service level reduction then, looking at the next slide? Or the slide with all the options on it? That would not start until 2027?
So what that means is that would likely wouldn't be able to achieve all of that to that time. Not as that it couldn't start to then. It would take a period of time to work through, through the collective agreements, terminations, all that kind of stuff, severance pieces, to actually get down to where you actually get the full $4.1 million. That's why. It wouldn't be that, it would just be nothing, and then 4.1. It would be a graduation to get there, depending how long it takes to implement the service cuts in that manner.
So an opportunity then, so to speak, to strategically look at those cuts as opposed to doing a straight service level cut across the board?
That's right. So that's one of the recommendations from ourselves, is that if council wants to reduce services, it's better to do it targeted.
So, okay, so we wouldn't do it, as the slide is showing, the slide's a bit misleading, in that it's not straight across the board. The slide is an example. We would go through a strategic exercise over the next few years to look at cost savings.
That is one option that could be considered inside of there. Yes, you could do it that way. There is also options that you could consider doing it faster than that by targeting certain pieces. And we did look at that in ourselves as well.
Okay, but that would all come back to council as well?
It'd have to come back to council.
So we would be able to take...
Service-level decisions are council's decisions.
Cost savings, yep. All right, thank you very much.
So, thank, when we, when we talk about the $4.1 million, that's, that's looking back into contingencies, that's looking into additional staffing that is required to move forward. A question I would have is if, if you're doing this for a year, and, you know, not tying the hands of a future council, new staff, this FTE, are these, are these term positions then? They're not permanent positions, correct?
We would have to take a look at doing it in term positions instead of actually doing it as permanent positions on these ones here. The drawback for actually doing that is trying to attract qualified individuals. But it could also be that we support them on contracts and so forth in the short term.
So actually, we could do contract work in there instead of even having staff?
So we, we typically, though, the reason why we put FTEs, because we have to come to council to ask for FTEs. It doesn't mean that we wouldn't hire regardless. Look at getting contract staff instead of actually city staff members. But if we don't ask for the FTEs at the time, we can't, just, we lose that option.
Yeah, just, seeing the, the 4.1 includes that if you're putting an FTE in there and it's, it's not term, I'm concerned that when you hit to the second, you would actually...
That's another reason why doing it in shorter terms would be problematic, for that point of view. But there, obviously, even still, doesn't mean either way on these ones here, even the long term. Administration would always make the determination of what's the best mix, for, for example, whether it's contract or city staff.
And we still see 2027, as far as reductions wouldn't happen till that time. If cost savings or efficiencies were ever weren't realized by then, that's when they would start in 2027? Or ramping up to that time?
Ramping up to it so that, so that by 2027, you wouldn't have, the only, so that you wouldn't have to have the 4.1 as ongoing. Yeah, that's the idea.
Counsel Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I promise, make all these, this is my final question. Oh, I shouldn't make that promise, but it will be. The cheapest option is mothball. Am I correct? The cheapest option to the, to the taxpayer, and we're going to disregard any economic spinoff. We're going to disregard any of that. The cheapest option to the taxpayer would be the mothball. Correct?
So, in the longer term, it, yes, because it has only a 1.4% tax increase that you would have to do there, instead of a 2.24 theoretically. If you did both of them at the same time, it's a 0.8% difference. That's what that slide is telling, yeah.
Okay, so that would be the cheapest option. However, the one thing that I'm unclear about in that, if we did mothball, how, whoa, I said, that scared you, Mr. Riley. That's awesome. We can't afford one. If we did mothball, how does that affect the provincial grant that insists it be open and operating until 2028?
From my understanding and looking at it, it wouldn't affect that there, because it's still having it, the building there is that. Now, doesn't mean that the province wouldn't be very unhappy about putting all that money into a facility that is no longer being utilized.
Okay.
Yeah, so the difference is, the facility has to be for that purpose.
So we could sell it tomorrow?
Can't sell it. You have to have it mothballed, sitting there, yeah, to 2008. So that's why it's such a...
My remembrance of the agreement was that it had to be used for the purpose that the money, like, I'm just not clear what...
So, Mr. Riley has it there.
I have it right in front of me, I can read it to you if you want.
Yes, please.
The province's intention was that the facility remain an asset for the agricultural and agri-food community. Accordingly, the AGI grant includes a condition that LDE own and control the facility and the facility's assets for five years, i.e., until December 31st, 2027.
So it, just own it.
Could be closed, it's still, you'd still own it and control it.
But it just can't be sold. Okay, thank you.
Counsel Dodek.
Thank you. I just, most of the questions have been asked and answered, but I just have one going back to BAUs. Mr. Matthews? Okay. The reason I'm asking about B, I'm talking about a specific BAU, because there was some talk about removing BAUs to, to fund this project. But we get into an interesting situation in that we recently had a presentation of what it would cost to run our election, now that the province is trying to get us to hand count everything as to using tabulators. So when we received the presentation regarding the extra cost, we were told that running an election with hand counting would cost approximately $665,000. But because there was just under $350,000 in BAUs, that in fact, for this year, there won't be any tax pressure, but it will be for, for a future election. So is, this is the kind of the damned if you do, damned if you don't. Because if you take it from a BAU that is being used for a specific purpose, and in this case is to mitigate the costs that are being forced on us, then we don't know what's going to, what it might be in terms of future removals of BAUs.
So, thank you, Counsel Dodek. So that is correct. The funding that, some of the funding for the election is inside of BAUs. It's not the funding that we're talking about that we'd use here in this piece, like, of the total. However, I think what you were implying there when I heard, you know, like, and using it, is that, yes, you are, you are tying your hands or using your hands from those funds for a different purpose that you may need. I.e., it's not there any longer. That one's gone for that purpose, plus on top, we're using this. Anything else that comes down the road, here's the risks that I was referring to earlier on in the presentation.
Got you, I have no more questions.
You and Jeff both said you had no more questions? Really? All right, Counsel Schmitt-Rempel.
Thank you very much. Going to the funding strategy and taking a look at the city operational requirements, which are the FTE requirements, facilities and financial. Are the staffing, are these staffing requests positions that don't currently exist at LDE?
That is correct, yeah. So they're, they're facility components that, that LDE, from lack of a better thing here on it, didn't fully appreciate the, the, this level of technical nature that they needed, or the amount of support they would need to run a facility that size.
Okay, so what are the current staffing costs for the city at LDE?
For the city, like, for, just to make sure I get this in clarified here, that we're providing to them?
Not that we're providing, what are the current city staffing costs? So we have somebody that's working over there, leading that. What is that current cost? And is that, is that included in this ask as well?
So, without giving out some information I have to be careful with on individual salaries and so forth, what I can say is inside of the, of the funding, that detachment one, attachment two, sorry, attachment two with this package has the budget from LDE. Inside of that total value, which is that 9.3 million expenditures, includes the wages for the city staff member or the CEO that actually is from the city of Leffridge. That's inside of that, that total. So the city's portion that's going in there is also funding a piece of that, that component.
Okay, so that, so in, in that list for 2025, we have three FTEs at $300,000.
That's right.
So that position that's there now would be included in this ask?
No, so these are additional to it. So what these three are, is two, two facility staff members. I just had to bring up my, another document here, and I could tell you the type of positions those are. And also, and a financial support person that is working with them. So recently, one of the things for the LDE, they were trying to get a replacement for their, their staff there, and they were having some difficulties attracting another staff person to go there. So this is one of the ways that we were able to support them. So that wasn't a portion that was in their budget, but there was also a piece that had to be at a cap up, I guess you would say, for that one.
Okay, and the city will still continue to fund that staff member then that's over there? In the leadership role?
So it's funded through the, the 4.1 million in the, so the top part, you know, the 1.8 million of the grant is, and then the, here, between those two makes up that amount, so that is correct.
Okay, and then would it be fair to say that the staffing component would also come to us as part of the business plan?
The staffing itself for the LDE?
As we move through a business plan, will there be a further staffing component that will come to us as part of the business plan?
Well, so for, that would probably go to the board of the exhibition, not necessarily to city council. It's, it would be similar to, and at least when I'm thinking about this, it's similar to the, to the, the way the LPC works and, and council. Council provides the, the funding to that, and the separate legal entity then actually does the, the decision-making on, on that. And even then, it's the administration on the side of the LDE that, that makes those decisions.
Right, but it would be part of a business plan, future staffing?
Of course, that there would be, part of the costs of doing a business plan would always be part of the overall business plan of saying, this is how much it costs to run a facility or, or the requirements to do that.
Okay, and then one final question I do have. What if we don't approve this today?
Yes, so, as, as said in the beginning of my presentation, unfortunately, just the same way back in December of last year, LDE is currently not financially sustainable on their own. So although, and to answer Counselor Carlson's question as part of this, there, it looks like there's about one point, I'm just looking over, see, Mr. Payton, $1.7 million remaining of, of funding within, or just over $1.7 million with the funding, still from the city grant funding, but that is being drawn down now. And so the wind-up costs, if council decided not to do this today, those wind funds would start being used to do the wind-up costs, to pay back the re-show deposits, refunds, other wind-up costs to actually start closing operations.
Turn me on, I do, okay. When, when, when does the society's grant come to LDE?
I believe in the spring.
And how much is that?
For, I'll get Mr. Galucci to come and speak to that. He, that's probably best he got it right from administration.
It, it typically comes in March. Sometimes it's around April, and it is $398,000.
Thank you.
Counsel Carlson. You're not in for questions?
Mayor Higgin, just maybe if I, me too, I just wanted to clarify, Samantha and I were having a sidebar on the side here just now. Just similar to decisions at the city when it comes to staffing with this, you know, the CAO, or in this case, the CEO of the, of the exhibition, staffing and the hiring processes are actually, they're privy, even the board. And so, just want to make sure that, that for the community-wise, they understand the process, that that's how the administration works on it. The funding pieces, or the strategic plan, or the governance pieces would be the board, and ultimately come into business planning to, to council.
All right. No further questions. Counselor Carlson?
No.
No?
I was just gonna-
All right.
Do we have a motion coming forward here?
So we do have a motion. We have just a minute.
So there's three items to this. We have 511, 512, and 513, and some of them are just motions coming from Economic to be approved at council. So Ryan's got them up on the screen.
Oh, sorry. So I know, I had one that was coming forward, and that was five-
This one has to do with the third-party review.
The third-party-
This is admin, and then this is today's.
Additional options.
So I don't know how you want to do it.
All right. I guess we could start with the 511, and it's up on the screen now, and this is the third-party review presentation?
And you've discussed this at Economic, it's just coming forward now.
And this is just coming forward from Economic? So, I can read this, and if there's any questions, or if there's a mover, I'll just move through it here. Okay, Counselor Krosen will move this, that, be resolved, the city council, in light of the high-level information discovered from the aforementioned third-party review, direct the city manager return to council at the end of December 10th, 2024, meeting with a plan to continue on with the review of Lethbridge District Exhibition, including determining the amount of source of funding in conjunction with all other budget requests to be decided at that meeting. Number two, direct administration to amend City of Lethbridge policies and procedures as needed to better protect the corporation and Lethbridge taxpayers in the future from undue financial risk in accordance with the following objectives. To ensure the City of Lethbridge does not finance, backstop, or otherwise guarantee any borrowing by on, or on behalf of any community organization to fund their projects, to better assess the, and address capital and lifecycle funding requirements for city-owned facilities that are operated by community organizations under leases and other types of agreements. As C, be, to better ensure accountability and transparency for municipal funding provided to community organizations for capital projects. And D, to better ensure administrative due diligence on operating agreements with community organization and grants awarded by the City of Lethbridge by establishing requirements for operational performance reporting, financing, financial reporting, and/or project deliver, deliverable reporting by funding recipients throughout the funding period based on program or minimum dollar thresholds. And B, establishing clear conditions and guidelines for eligible and ineligible expenditures of funding. And C, conducting periodic reviews and cost-benefit analysis of funding provided to community organizations or third-party service providers. And E, to foster stronger governance of community organizations by exploring and recommending minimum standards for community boards, such as training and professional development on governance, that could be established as conditions that must be met for community organizations to qualify for larger funding agreements or capital projects. And further resolved, the administration develop, and, develop a recommended implementation plan and schedule for these policies and procedure amendments for considerations by the Economic and Finance Standing Policy Committee before the end of Q1 2025. A question I would have first for Mr. City Manager or his designate, there's no, the cost would come back with this, is what I, I believe would be as far as the work that's to be done in here? Or is that work that your team, now that you're not working with all this 72 hours a day with the current, is this work that's gonna be done just with your team without having additional dollars required?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. So I'm just making sure, I was just glancing at the resolution, I was trying to bring it up here, make sure that I didn't have anything different on it, and then expecting this one here, getting this one, I was getting confused between the one that you had brought forward, the last Economic. This is the one that was just inside of the directions and the OBM front. This would be work that we would do currently with our existing staff complement, so there wouldn't be any other requirements on that.
Thank you for that. So Counselor Krosen, I, I do see that, I think a lot of this work was come from some governance as well, obviously, so. Oh, and there's questions? I'm sorry, Counselor Carlson?
I'm in for debate.
You're in for debate? Okay, Counselor Krosen, I have no questions. If you want to open debate?
As I, as I look at this, this is the motion arising that Counselor Carlson and I worked with administration on and brought forward through Economic, and now it is here. There's a lot of pieces in it, but the thing that is essential to remember is that the plan will be coming on how to implement that, and within that plan would be timelines, costing, if there is any, et cetera. And this is to ensure that we have the governance in place, we have the policies in place, we have all of those things in place for any future councils, any future decisions to say, this is our rules, this is what we fund, what we don't fund, and this is the role of the city. So this would be setting up better bumpers around anything in the future in this area. And I hope my colleagues will support this.
And Counselor Carlson?
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Very pleased to support this. Even though we're in the middle of what we're probably looking at, like, at least a year-long crisis we've been dealing with, I think it's important to always take the time just to look back and reflect, and that's why we did the third-party review. And there were a lot of learnings in that, and this is a lot that fell out of that to say, yep, mistakes were made, there's a lot of blame to go around. How can we limit future councils from going down the same path, making the same mistakes? And so I think the work that we've done with administration on this, I think, sets up a lot, if, if this goes forward and we follow through on this, it's gonna set up a lot of guardrails. And I would hate to see any other future councils be in these same predicaments, so I'm just hoping from our colleagues' support to get this work done and in place. Thank you.
Thank you. And I do have a question that comes out of here, debate, for, for our, our city manager or his designate. We're talking about, the work up here is, is amazing. Could you tell me, you're telling me that you would not do this without this? I mean, it's important to have it written down, of course, but it's my hope that this is work that would be done anyways? Is that correct?
So yes. The longest part here, we would, we would try to achieve most of this, this work. It's always better to have the tone from the top, and obviously, in this case, right from council, to help support us in doing this. And some of the things, as I mentioned, I think I mentioned in, where we're doing the, in passing, or maybe it was when we had discussions on, on this piece, is that there will be change. And some of the change, it also, what I mean by that is how we interact with groups. This is an important piece of, of work, and, but we would, we would go here, but it sure is beneficial that council's supporting this, or if council would support this.
And, and I thank you for that, and I, and I do get that question from the community, and that's why I had to ask that, is, you mean your administration would not look at this stuff? And so I just wanted to make sure the explanation, it's better to have it on, of course, on paper, that that is the work moving forward, but I just was, I am not concerned, but there's members of the public would be concerned when they see that, well, wouldn't you do that anyways? So thank you for that explanation, appreciate it. With that, back to Counselor Carlson. Oh, yes?
If I can, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for that. I, I want, I want to be clear that this, this was the administrative recommendations. We worked with administration, and they said, if, these are the things we would want in place. So it, it's not administration not wanting to do these things, it's, it's administration saying, please, council, give us some better guidelines so this never happens again. And that's what you're seeing in front of us, is saying, yes, put this in policy, so it, it's not just a guess.
Okay. Agreed. Thank you. Counselor Krosen?
One question. Question! I'm gonna call the question.
Question's been called, all in favor? And that is unanimous. Thank you. Do I have a mover for 5.1.2? That's administrative presentation. That's Counselor Krosen. All right. Move by Counselor Krosen. Be resolved, the city council, direct administration to proceed with the development of a recommended business plan, implementation plan, and budget development of municipally-controlled corporation to consolidate event attraction across Lethbridge. B, work with the Lethbridge and District Exhibition Board and provincial government on the future LDE governance model. And C, explore potential new models for event attraction and partnerships to leverage unutilized space in a way that maximizes community benefit. And number two, refer the following LDE capital considerations to the 2027 to 2030 capital improvement program deliberations, and that would be A, demolition of the old pavilions, except the West Pavilion, option three, and B, LDE parking lot reconstruction project. And I would like to, to ask Mr. City Manager or his designate for just a high level on this, a reminder of what this actually entails, if you could. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. So in, in this regard, this is actually from the recommendations from the Deloitte Report to begin looking at the possibility of consolidating event attraction and developing municipally-controlled corporation that would actually centralize that component. And so there'll be, obviously, the municipally-controlled corporation would be new for the City of Lethbridge. This would be something that we would be working through to, to establish, build the business case around that, and further work that would come back to council on how that would, how that would transpire. It also affects, as, if you remember the slide from, from back in, in Economic, components, one of the benefits of this model, it actually gets the corporation of, or the agriculture society, or the LDE of what it is, back to being under the egg society components, so it allows shareholders to have that piece, whereas the, what it does is it breaks out the actual facility components into a municipally-controlled corporation and keeps the egg society components separate, allowing them to focus on what they're really, what they're, what they're mandated and what they're really good at, which is the actual egg components of those, of those, of the actual operations as well. And then, of course, there's all, there's the other components inside of here, looking how event attraction in the longer term for the community would look like as well, too, within this, within this overall structure as well. So it begins with, with setting up the corporation and building, and building the, and frankly, returning, it's hopefully, at a sooner stage, the egg society back to the, to the shareholders and so forth as well.
So thank you for that, and I see that it's, proceed with the development of a business plan. Love to see that. You have business plan in there, and implementation plan, and budget. Now, of course, no cost. This is ongoing with no cost, and will be brought back for future budget, because I believe, I think that some of this budget was already put in previously. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, so we will come back and take a look at the work on this piece and so forth, but what we're also, knowing the importance of this work and how this needs to be done. Obviously, we're, we're looking to use existing money as possible. We will provide, there's, there's two pieces. There's the longer setup and how that runs budget, and there's actually the work to get the initial work done. The initial work piece is what we'll look at internally, the longer term of how this runs and how budgets transfer between what is today LDE for staffing and so forth, that'll all come back at a later date.
I know additional, again, dollars at this moment we're running with. Okay. Thank you. I see no further questions. Counselor Krosen?
Don't let the fact that the exhibition has been around since 1897 fool you. The exhibition board has not been around since 1897. There have been many different governance models for how the exhibition has been run, and if we look back into the 1930s, the city did own and run it all, and we just had a contract with the exhibition board to offer the egg events there and other events the city contracted out. So we have done something similar to this, not fully municipally-controlled corporation, but we have done other ways of managing the exhibition property since the 1911 relocation to this site. And so this is letting us look at other options, including, looking at the municipally-controlled corporation, and to see the best way of doing it. And as you noted, there will be a business plan and implementation plan, and a budget developed all around this, and we'll see where this moves forward, and I'm hoping my colleagues will support this at this time.
See, no further questions, so with that, I take that as a question? Questions been called, all in favor? And that's unanimous. Thank you. I do have, and, and I can move this, but I would need to have Counselor Palladino, Deputy Mayor, sorry, Deputy Mayor Palladino, come in on this. a few different options here, just want to make sure we have the right information down.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
All right, we're, again, we do have our public hearings at 3:00 PM, so we're just going to go through Section 7 here, so the bylaws currently from Economic and Finance Standing Policy Committee from Council Doherty, bylaw 6467, amendment to bylaw 5197, the fees and charges bylaw for a second reading be resolved, the bylaw 6467, amendment to bylaw 5197, the fees and charges bylaw be given second reading, Council Doherty.
Blind attorney, now to call the question.
Question been called, all in favor? And that's unanimous, and for a third reading be resolved, the bylaw 6467, amendment to bylaw 5197, the fees and charges bylaw be given third reading, the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same, Council Doherty. Question's been called.
Question, yes.
All in favor?
Sorry.
All right, that's unanimous, thank you. And for 7.1.2 from Council Schmidt-Rempel, recommendation of Economic and Finance Policy Committee bylaw 6468, amendment to bylaw 6110, the City of Lethbridge Safety Codes Permit bylaw for a second reading be resolved, the bylaw 6468, amendment to bylaw 6110, the City of Lethbridge Safety Codes Permit bylaw be given second reading, Council Schmidt-Rempel.
This provides updates to the existing bylaw 6110, the City of Lethbridge Safety Codes Permit bylaw, including updating fees for providing digital copies of records in order to achieve cost recovery and clarifying terminology around digital records. With that, I will call for the vote.
Question been called, all in favor? And that's unanimous, and for a third reading be resolved, the bylaw 6468, amendment to bylaw 6110, the City of Lethbridge Safety Codes Permit bylaw be given third reading, and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same, Council Schmidt-Rempel.
I will call for the vote.
Question been called, all in favor? And that two's unanimous. And to 7.1.3 from Council Parker, bylaw 6470, 2025 Incentives for Prepayment Penalties and Tax Deferral bylaw for a second reading be resolved, the bylaw 6470, 2025 Incentives for Prepayment Penalties and Tax Deferral bylaw be given second reading, Council Parker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, but of course, this sets a 1.5% discount for people who are enrolled in the TIP program, also establishes the current errors and penalty structure, and makes the necessary adjustments to dates as well throughout the calendar year. Call the question.
Question been called, all in favor? Unanimous, and for a second, or for a third reading, so be resolved, the bylaw 6470, 2025 Incentives for Prepayment Penalties and Tax Deferral bylaw be given third reading, and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same, Council Parker. Question been called, all in favor? And that's unanimous, thank you. And from Council Campbell, bylaw 6474, amendments to, amendment to bylaw 6233, 6234, and 6364, rate of last resort, 7.1.4, for second reading be resolved, the bylaw 6474, amendment to bylaw 6233, 6234, and 6364, rate of last resort be given second reading, Council Campbell.
Basically, some changes, the name changed to the rate of last resort, energy price set for two years with a cap on the rate adjustment of 10% after two-year period, .1 kilowatt per hour surcharge must be clearly stated on the customer utility bills and must be included in the terms and conditions, the UCA will contact customers every nine days to make sure you're aware of retail options, there's no change in cost here at this time, I ask for your support.
All right, question been called, all in favor? And that does pass unanimously, and for a third reading be resolved, the bylaw 6474, amendment to bylaw 6233, 6234, and 6364, rate of last resort be given third reading, and the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign and seal the same, Council Campbell.
Call the question.
Question been called, all in favor? And that is unanimous, and with that, we will... Oh, actually, we can do that, we had a couple... No, it's okay. So we do have city council inquiry and administrative responses, I do see from Council Schmidt-Rempel, working with school boards on needs and assessing the school accelerator program, as well as, oh, I'm sorry, that is the same one, so Council Schmidt-Rempel, your inquiry is in and the responses come back from administration, and any questions on that?
No questions, and Councilor Parker and I will take that to the next joint committee meeting, thank you.
Awesome, thank you. And another council inquiry that was submitted by Council Middleton-Hope regarding drones, and administrative response will come back to him, but it is, that request has gone in, and that is regarding how drones are regulated, and does the city have a jurisdiction, so that will come back at a later time. All right, if we move to Section 12, council updates, are there any council updates? Council Schmidt-Rempel?
Just pulling up here, from the regular meeting of the Lethbridge Police Commission on November 27th, the downtown policing unit in collaboration with the Property Crimes Unit, Crime Suppression Team, and Lethbridge Scan continues to conduct targeted enforcement projects downtown. So far this year, police have executed over 360 warrants, arrested more than 250 people for open drug use, removed nearly 1,800 doses of methamphetamine and fentanyl from the streets, seized weapons, removed encampments and trespassers, and had more than 400 positive interactions with the public on project days. Applications continue to be processed for a January 2025 police cadet class, and the February 2025 community police officer cadet class are now being accepted for an, and applications are now being accepted for an experienced police officer class tentatively scheduled for July 2025. Community police officers from the spring class have completed field training, officer training, and now are solo officers. The January 2024 police cadet class is continuing their field training and are scheduled to complete this in mid-December, and then they will be considered solo-ready. The July 2024 police cadet class continues to progress through their training and are scheduled to graduate on December 20th and will be assigned to patrol teams for field training. And the 2024 experienced police officer class is continuing their field training, which is expected to be completed in mid-December. At this point, they will be considered solo-ready. We're also seeing a decrease in total crime violations, and when comparing January to July 2024 to January to July 2023, total crime violations decreased by 21.6%, and total crime severity index score decreased by 24.3%, so that is good news, we're seeing some good downward trending there. You can see the full agenda on the Lethbridge Police Commission website. And finally, last week, I was in Edmonton for the Economic Strategy Committee meeting with Alberta municipalities, we received presentations on modular housing, PRAZE, Economic Development Canada, and Centre for Newcomers Society of Calgary, as well as reports on productivity in Canada, housing, climate change, labor force, passenger rail, childcare, and property tax fairness. If anybody on council is interested in any of these reports, please let me know, and I can send those along to you, thank you.
Thank you very much, Council Schmidt-Rempel, and with that, we will, oh, sorry, Council Crowson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin, at the last Governance Standing Policy Committee, we were sent a inquiry from the Agenda Review Committee, because they wanted us to look at the governance, the difference between an inquiry and something that should become an official business motion. And we actually have that in the procedure bylaw, there is a dividing line, and it is actually at the discretion of the city manager. If the city manager believes that an inquiry looking into it would cost $2,000 or more of staff time, the city manager then can return to that council member and ask that it become an OBM, and whether or not a resolution of council comes from that or not, and so that's sort of the dividing line. The thing about inquiries, it should be something relatively easy for administration to answer, it should be something that is of interest or of wide public interest, otherwise it should just go through 311. But, so we do have that outlined in the procedure bylaw, so if any of my council colleagues are ever wondering how to decide if you should submit an inquiry or make it an official business motion, please refer to that in our procedure bylaw, or ask the city clerk's department or the city manager if you're not sure which way to go. So we did have that thorough discussion of governance, and I was asked to bring that report and update back to all of council.
All right, thank you very much, Council Crowson, appreciate that, and with that, we will break, or I guess, we don't have to break, we'll just continue through this meeting, but we are going to switch over to our public hearings that will be started at 3:00, and so, right away here. And I think, Ryan, you'll need a few minutes there, Mr. Westerson, to get things flipped over, so a couple of minutes. Mr. Westerson, to get things flipped over, so a couple minutes. I call the order, public hearing for bylaw 6459, land use bylaw amendment regarding 404, 12th Street South. The procedure for this hearing will be, we'll begin by calling on Kurt Fisher, community planner, to provide background to the case. Anyone else who wishes to speak on this bylaw will then be called upon. We'll ask three times if there's anyone else who wishes to make a presentation. City council will then have the opportunity to ask any questions of the presenters. The hearing will then be closed. Consideration of third, second and third reading will be made by city council immediately following the public hearing. So I'll now call on Mr. Fisher to provide a background to the case. Are there, and actually, and I should ask, are there any con... Conflicts on... This is on 12th Street? Fourth Avenue and 12th Street. Any conflicts from my colleagues? Oh, go ahead, Councillor Dodick.
Yeah. Okay, so there's four public hearings, is that right? Six? But is it the same applicant? Okay, which ones?
This one is a different. And then we've got the next five.
Okay, so what's the address of this one? Okay, so this one's okay. All right, sorry, so we'll wait till the last four. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, go ahead, Mr. Fisher.
Good afternoon, Your Worship, and members of city council. My presentation today, as was mentioned, is for 404 and 408, 12th Street South, and it's a proposed land use bylaw amendment for these two properties. The purpose of the bylaw is to allow, is to re-designate the property from low-density residential to direct control in order to allow for a townhouse-style residential development with 12 units. And the applicant listed here is also in attendance today as well. The properties, the properties are located in the London Road neighborhood, and they are close to the Civic Commons Block and the downtown, as you can see from the maps here. This is a view of the north side of the, of the site, as seen from Fourth Avenue South. And this is a view of the east side of the site, looking at the front of both properties. I'll try and speak up here. So this is a view of the, of the front of the properties, looking at the front of the properties from 12th Street South. So to provide some context, each property currently contains a single detached dwelling, and the applicant's desire is to demolish these two dwellings, consolidate the two parcels, and construct a 12-unit residential development that will be designed to look like four townhouses with basement suites facing Fourth Avenue South and a fourplex facing 12th Street South. And this would not be permitted in the current RL district. This, this slide here shows the proposed land use redesignation from the existing RL district on the left to the proposed direct control district on the right. And as you can see, the property is surrounded by a mixture of land use districts, including low, medium, and high-density residential to the east and south, and many properties with the commercial or public building zoning to the west. The direct control district was chosen because the applicant's proposed development would not be able to meet the requirements of the R150 district. The proposed direct control district will allow townhouses and fourplex as permitted uses. It will require six off-street parking stalls, and it must be, which must, which must be accessed from the rear lane in order to preserve the boulevards and the street trees. And it will also ensure that the scale and form of development respects the surrounding uses. And no servicing or infrastructure concerns have been identified by city staff. Bylaw 6459 aligns with the South Saskatchewan Regional Plan, specifically with this, in relation to these strategies listed here. The bylaw would also be in line with these policies in the MDP, as this would provide an additional innovative housing opportunity with potential for aging in place in a mature neighborhood within walking distance to downtown and transit, and it would utilize existing infrastructure. The subject properties are located in the mixed-use corridor of the London Road Area Redevelopment Plan, and they would comply with this plan, specifically with a vision for this corridor, which is to be a vibrant, attractive node that is full of life by allowing a mix of land uses with a focus on medium and large-scale residential. And the bylaw would also comply with the medium-scale built-form regulations of the ARP. For notification, the applicant did host an open house in July, and he shared information on his plans with neighbors at that time. Notification letters were also mailed to the 25 adjacent landowners, as shown in the green-hatched areas on the map. And as a result of the postal strike, we did also hand-deliver these letters again as well, and we posted a notification sign directly on the property to ensure the neighbors were notified. Advertisements also appeared in the Lethbridge Herald and on the city's website. And to date, I've received two responses from residents who expressed concern about the impacts to street parking and a landowner who had questions regarding the tax implications. And you'll note that the London Road Neighborhood Association has also submitted a letter in support of this proposal today. So in conclusion, the, the bylaw would align with all of our applicable statutory plans, and if approved, it would provide an additional housing opportunity in the neighborhood. And our department's recommendation is at the bottom of the slide here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. The applicant, I believe Kyle Werzer, is also here to make a presentation. Mr. Werzer?
Yeah, good afternoon, mayor and council members. My name is Kyle Werzer. I am the owner of 404 and 408, 12th Street South. Before I get into the proposal, I'll just explain a little more about the two current houses that are there. Guess this is the clicker. So the, the two homes that are there, they're older bungalows...
You'll have to come a little bit closer to the mic, thank you.
They're older bungalows. Both foundations are in pretty rough shape and beyond repair. The total parcel size would be 100 by 125 feet on the corner of Fourth and 12th. This is some images of the current homes that are sitting on site, and a shot of the two homes if you were to stand on 12th Street. So for the proposal, this is a site plan of what it would look like. Looking at the site from 12th Street, you would have the duplex, units one and two, and then a fourplex along Fourth Avenue South. Each, each unit would have its own individual legal basement suite, which would be a one-bedroom or studio suite. And like Kurt mentioned, it's in the mixed-use area of London Road, which is a transition point between downtown and the London Road residential area. The site, the reason I chose the site does fall into line with the municipal development plan, but also the London Road Area Redevelopment Plan, which is calling for a focus on medium to large-scale residential. Is that my phone? Sorry, sorry. Design consideration, so it was, as Kurt mentioned, I'm requesting a minimum six off-street parking stalls. I hope to achieve seven or eight, but six is what I know for sure I can achieve off the lane there. For the 225 feet that goes along Fourth Avenue and 12th Street, I was going to put in driveways, and I would have had sufficient parking by doing that. But the city has made it very clear that they don't want to see driveways along those two streets, mainly to keep the flexible street parking for the businesses and then the residents that are nearby, and then also the preservation of the trees that are on the two, two roads there. For the design considerations, one thing I heard at the open house is that some of the neighbors didn't really like the modern design of a lot of infills, and so I'm going to go with something a little more Victorian that you saw in the first rendering there, just to kind of keep it in line with what the other houses are in the neighborhood, and then it would be a two-story structure, so nothing beyond what is allowed in an RL district. So, again, the mixed-use area has a bunch of different land uses. Behind me is a church. To the north, I have a professional services building. Kitty corner to the lot, there is a R37, medium-density, fourplex directly across me, single-family house. There's a high-density apartment building in the middle there, followed by five more single-family homes. And then on the far south, I believe it's a fourplex on Fifth Ave. Across from that, you have another high-density, that's the Dillon Tower, which is an R200, followed by a swited house and the Lutheran Church, which is directly beside my parcel. So, neighborhood and community benefits. The biggest one, I think, is housing affordability. Average Lethbridge home cost last year was up over 16%. Average two-bedroom rent is now almost $1,500 a month plus utilities, which is 8% increase over the last year. The neighborhood promotes walkable and bikeable neighborhoods, which is the policy 100 of the municipal development plan. And again, the big thing being that it's in that mixed-use corridor, which is Section 544 of the London Road ARP. Again, the focus being on medium to large-scale residential. Aging in place, policy 102. The representative that sold me the property was part of one of the churches nearby. He thought that the basement suites would be a perfect fit for some of the older members of the church. It's a great place for them to live, be able to walk to church, be a part of the community. I think it helps with the aging in place policy. Efficient use of the land, policy 113. I'm taking it from two doors to 12, technically. The, I think that's a fairly efficient use of land. I mean, you could go higher density, but it's something that is a gentle density to the neighborhood. And then tax revenue. I estimate that roughly, there will be a five-times tax increase on the site from what's currently there. And then revitalization, just of the downtown core. I think approving and promoting projects like this in the surrounding area of the downtown will, will help improve the downtown community. And yeah, I'd be happy to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Werzer. Are there any members of the public who wish to make a presentation on this matter? I see that there's none that have been called in ahead of time, but doesn't mean you can't come up if there's anybody. You have five minutes to speak on the issue. Sure, come forward, state your name, and so that we have that for the record, please. And you'll have up to five minutes to speak to the issue, thank you.
Hi, my name is Darcy Logan, and I live at 423 12th Street South, so just across the street and a little bit down. And I'm opposed to the redevelopment on the corner of 12th and Fourth. I support redevelopment in principle, but must voice my discomfort with the plan to move the parcel to direct control. And I'm opposed for two reasons. One, I think it's ill-conceived and will compound existing parking problems, and that they're shoehorning the maximum number of suites and doing the bare minimum to ameliorate the impact to the quality of life for the people that already live there and are facing ongoing parking issues. And number two, I think the, the public consultation process for this was deeply flawed. Onto point one, our neighborhood already has a parking problem, and the development, I feel, will compound this. My wife and mother, with medical conditions, are sometimes already forced to park up to a block away. Now the developer intends to put in 12 residences, I feel, without adequately addressing parking. You guys, I'm sure, have been to the Yates or to Southminster when there's a performance on and you're looking for parking? Like, those are the blocks right around there. And I feel that Kyle stated in the open house that their target demographic for these residences were working professionals, were the words exactly that he used. And working professionals own vehicles, and if there is a couple, they most likely each own a car. I don't think it's realistic to think that the people moving in are going to be using transit and walking. There could easily be 18 to 24 new vehicles in that direct area adding and compounding to that problem. And putting in six parking stalls for that many new vehicles, for me, shoved in the back with, what, 30 waste bins, too? I don't feel it's good. And I'd like to quote from the London Road Area Redevelopment Plan, which we know supersedes and abrogates all other bylaws when it comes to this area. And that's under Policies 5.3.2. G. It's to encourage the conservation of existing structures in good condition and rehabilitating those in poor condition. So I feel like, if you own those properties, you fix them up. I feel sometimes developers get a pass that your common people coming up don't. My wife has MS, and the last time she had an attack, she couldn't walk. Thankfully, she is stable and doing well, but when I wanted to preemptively put a driveway at the front of the house where I might have to build a ramp in the future, city planning told me that under the ARP I can't even have a driveway. No exemptions, no appeal process to that. But the developer can pay us $3,000 and come in front of city council today and have the rules changed in their favor. And I feel that's a double standard, and I think the ARP is a foundational document that should be applied to everybody equally. Now, I said I thought the consultation process was unfair and unjust. It unfolded during a postal strike, which means that notices couldn't be mailed out. They had to be hand-delivered, and by the time our family got one, there was only six business days to get in writing and submit. We wanted to do a petition, couldn't get it in time, and get neighbors to submit documents, couldn't do it. Six business days isn't much time. I know several people that wanted to attend and talk to this, but this, this hearing is 3:00 PM on a weekday, like, most people work. They only consulted residences within 60 meters. Like, that's not even the full length of the block. So what about the people at 70 meters, 80 meters, 120 meters that are going to have their parking and quality of life impacted by this? And according to the bylaw, no tenants were contacted. It goes strictly to landlords, and I think that's an injustice as well. It's unfair to the people that live there. They are impacted and should have a say. Under the ARP, renters are all supposed to be vital stakeholders, not second-class citizens without a voice. I understand homeowners have a financial stake, but renters also deserve to have a say in their quality of life. People that rent in that area weren't even informed of this process or this hearing. And I was told by planning that this is the bare minimum consultation according to bylaw, and if I want it changed, I need to pay $3,000 for the chance to come before a city council and have you vote on changing that. And in conclusion, I would like to put a pause on this development to allow the developer to address parking and for city planning to have a fair consultation with stakeholders. I'm not a NIMBY, and I'm not opposed to development in principle. Just this kind of ludicrous folly that I feel is being ram-rodded through by parties uninterested in listening to the voices of the community. The overwhelming majority of people I've talked to directly adjacent and in my neighborhood don't want this and don't want a fleet of cars fighting over street parking like feral cats and dogs fighting over scraps.
Mr. Logan, it is, the time limit is up. We appreciate, I think we've got where you're coming from. Absolutely, we do, I think. So with that, sorry, there's no... We need to keep decorum in here, please. Whether you're for or against, we'd ask you, please, keep decorum within chambers. So please say your name, please.
My name is Alexis Bylobziski. I'm a registered nurse for Lethbridge Home Care. I live on 12th Street South, 423, right across. That was my husband, Darcy. I'm the person that has been diagnosed, unfortunately, with MS in 2020. Great year. I've lived on that street since 2007 in the summer. that street since 2007 in the summer. We were so excited to move from a rental to our first home. It is a two-bedroom bungalow that is over 100 years old, and we've maintained it with the little that we have in our bank account, but we have. I would like to present my issue as someone who is disabled that works in the community with disabled people. The accessibility to vehicles, to cultural events. Also, I have a concern that someday I am going to need accessoride. And accessoride doesn't come to back alleys. It only comes to the front. There's many times that with our RPP, we do have the two-hour parking on one side that is from 8 o'clock to 6:00 PM. We only have the commissioners working Monday to Friday, 9 to 4. So they only are very short-staffed, as you guys probably know. That's one of the many areas in the city that is patrolled by, I believe, two. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, by two people during Monday to Friday. After hours, we are to call 311, and we get it's an emergency service. So pretty much you're out of luck. There's many times where I, we only have one vehicle between the two of us, and it's a Yaris. It's pretty small. If I come home, a lot of times I cannot park in front of my home. Now, I'm doing pretty good right now. I'm worried I am going to need a driveway at some point or some sort of parking in the back. If I ever need a ramp or I need accessoride, I'm worried about the impacts of an older, the older neighborhood that actually does have many older people that live also around the corner in rentals that would need accessoride. They have handicap placards. And I'm just going to leave it at that. Thank you.
Sorry, if we, please not have clapping. I understand there's passion on both sides. Just, it's decorum for chambers. Thank you very much. And my apologies, Alex. What was your last name? Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Again, I will ask, is there anyone else that wishes to make a presentation? Please come forward, state your name.
My name is Mike Murillo. I have property directly across from the proposed development. It is a 75 by 85-foot lot, corner lot. I have two full duplexes from, built 1937. And I've met with Mr. Wurzer, looked at the plan. My biggest problem is not so much the development. It's what the city has, or city transit, wherever that department is, has not done. The two-hour parking, that's a joke. That commissioner goes by there maybe, maybe, twice a day. I've yet to ever see a ticket written. If you leave your premises, especially at this time of the year, with the three churches around, good luck to try to find. I've had, I have three handicapped people who live in those units. I keep the rent low because they're low-income. I've been a realtor for 33 years. I'm a low-income. I got to take care of that. What I want to know is what the city can do. Not, I've looked at the plans, and I understand construction and plans and layouts. What the city is proposing to help entire 12th Street. Because it's, the other side, the east side, or the west side of 12th Street is all against it. It's not restricted parking there. You've got the church there that takes up probably six cars that could park there. Is the city going to be redeveloping, putting in new sewer lines, all that? You know, what is the city going to, because you're going to be cash-cowling again, what are you guys going to do for the residents of 12th Street between 4th and 5th Avenue? You know, that never comes up. Again, I was very concerned with parking because it's ludicrous right now. There's only maybe two on that, on the entire council right here that pay $7,400 a year taxes or more, which I do on a 75 by 85-foot lot. And I can't even have my clients park there, my renters who I've lost before, just because of the parking situation. The way I've seen Mr. Wurzer cover that, he has told me that he tried to get more parking spots from the building commission or whoever's in charge, and they declined that. So I haven't got a problem with him building what he's proposing. What I have a problem with is what the city hasn't done. And I've been there 20 some-odd years. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Murillo. Appreciate that. Next, I'll ask again, is there anyone, sure, come forward, state your name, as usual. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and councilors and staff. My name is Marcia Bilebszyski. I'm a resident of Lethbridge, and my daughter and son-in-law live in 423, which is across the property that we're talking about today. And I just wanted to address my concerns. I also have some health issues, and when I go to visit my daughter and son-in-law, there's oftentimes that I cannot park in front of the house. So if I'm bringing her groceries, or I'm wanting to do something, some work in the home or whatever for them, I have to walk sometimes around the block. And I just think to myself, like, they're paying, like, taxes and rent, and they cannot park in front of their own home to haul in groceries. I don't know if any of you have had that experience where you're coming home from a long day of work. My daughter's a nurse. And you stop and get groceries, and you can't even park in front of your home. And it's your home, and it's your street. And it's a beautiful old area. London Road, when the house was first purchased, it has this nostalgic feel. And it's sort of too bad that it's being lost to, right now, there's a big apartment block at the corner and one, two houses down from him. So that's, for a small block, that's a lot of residents sort of packed into a small area. So it's already meeting for the small area that it is, like a high-density threshold, I think. There's a daycare just up the block. There's the Edith Cavell Center that houses seniors. There's a group home. And it's not a huge area, but it's a lovely area. It has nice trees. It brings some historical downtown feel. We used to have Spudnuts. I remember, everyone loves Spudnuts. And when they closed down, people were crying. Like, it's such a beautiful little area. And like the other people who spoke, it's not that I'm against development. I just think this is ill-conceived because of the number of people it's bringing into an already overpopulated area for the size. And no solution to the parking issues that are plaguing the residents that live there. And all they really want is to maintain a good quality of life, enjoy the neighborhood, and love where they live. And unfortunately, adding to the density is not the solution for that neighborhood. You know, it's good thought that building looks lovely on the photograph, but you don't live in a photograph. You live on a real street. You have to, you know, be able to enjoy your home and just do the normal things that everyone else has when you pay those taxes. And you want to bring your groceries home without walking two blocks. And cold weather's coming. It's not going to be fun walking two blocks with a few bags of groceries or making many trips, especially as there's a lot of seniors in the area. And as the previous gentleman stated, like, he has handicapped people. I see a lot of seniors in that area as well. So that's just my concern, is really the parking is the main concern, that there isn't really a solution for. I don't know what the solution is. But bringing more residents into an already overpopulated density is not a solution, in my opinion. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Is there any other members? Please come forward, state your name. And Marcia, your last name, again, was Bilebszyski? Is that right? Because that's what I thought. I was putting two and two together. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Christine Johnson, and my husband and I live on 12th Street A-South, which is a little cul-de-sac. We have lived in our home for 38 years, and we've never been able to park in front of our house. We're surrounded by apartment blocks, and we have no problem with that. We love it. I have no problem with having more density. But again, the parking is really an issue. And if that can be built into the project, I wouldn't have a problem with it. But I really do think that that's, you know, that is a huge issue for everybody. And as I said, on our cul-de-sac, we've never been able to park on it. My husband actually has to rent from our neighbor a little parking space. So I would just like that to be taken into account. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a presentation on this? And for a second time, is there anyone else that wishes to make a presentation on this? And for a third and final time, is there anyone that wishes to make a presentation on this? Hearing no other presenters, it's now for city, time for city council to ask questions of the presenters. And I do want to start off with a couple that I've, has came to my mind as I'm listening to those that are stating some challenges. And I think would be to our administration. If I could ask, I know that there's administration, and I need to understand this better, and from our team, I'm hoping you'll be able to explain it. Admin says, no, no driveways, et cetera, et cetera. I've heard from a couple here that are, if they don't face the challenges now, they'll be facing it in the future, having driveways. The, I've also heard that no one is against development in housing. I've heard that loud and clear, if it's done the right way. So my question, too, and I'm not sure who from administration could answer this, is this within the zoning of that area that there are no driveways? And if that is the case, what would that take to, if, and I don't know if I can ask this question, if to do that change so that that is allotted? Because it sounds like if there's parking that's off-street, and if we do have that, I think it's going to satisfy most of the questions that I've heard here, as long as it's done. And I think even the developer was looking at that as well. Who can answer that question for me?
Thank you for the question, Your Worship. I can answer that. So the restriction, the requirement for no driveways is a restriction that's listed actually in the London Road ARP. So it's part of the medium-scale built form regulations. So that applies to any properties that have those, that is considering those medium-scale type of developments. They also apply to some small-scale developments, as also some large-scale developments as well. So it's a policy that's listed right in the MDP. So if they want to have that to not apply, you'd have to amend the ARP.
So, and that's fine. I've heard that. But I've also heard that there's no appeal that was allowed or no, it sounds like the process isn't there to allow them to do that, from what I've heard. I could be wrong. This is just what I've heard. Is that, what is the process for that? For, because I'll go back a little bit. I'm just looking at, I think everybody wants this to happen, and if it's to change the ARP, is it London Road that gets involved? I'm sorry, process. It'd just be interesting to know.
Oh, it's a good question. So anyone could apply to amend the ARP. So the process is, it's, there's an application fee of about $27.50, and then it would be, you would have to go through the public hearing process. You'd have to come to city council to make a decision on that. So if, that's the process that it would take to remove those requirements for driveways.
All right. Thank you very much. And to the developer, one question here, and then I'll pass it on to colleagues. Was there, I'm hearing that, of course, it's unfortunate what is happening with, of course, the mail system and getting information out. I personally had an issue with the 60 meters, because as we've heard, I mean, you can just be down the street and have similar concerns or how it would affect you. Was there a tea party that you had put on to invite those folks to maybe give input on some of their concerns?
Yes, I had, like, the open house. Yes, yes. I hosted an open house. The family from 423 was there. And then I sat down with Mike Murillo the other day, and I've been more than open to have any conversation about the project. One thing I just want to talk about really quickly about the driveways is that, as a developer, I have no problem paying to put those in. But I really do think, from the city's perspective, having the flex use of the parking is more important than putting the driveways. Because if I put in driveways on each of my locations, you're going to be left with next to nothing on that whole 220 feet of frontage. So I actually think it would be worse for the neighbors, because then nobody can park there except for the people that live at my units. I don't know if that's better or worse, but...
And I do, oh, sorry, the image isn't up here. I do see you have an area that is a garden or something there in the middle. And just in my head, again, I don't know all of the rules, regulations. We'll figure that out or what zoning is. But if it is a parking for, I mean, it's flex, then, if some people do drive. Because I know there's a lot of people that do use transit. However, there's many that have two, three vehicles. And so it's really hard to say who will be in there now and who will be in there in the future. So, but that's some options to look at, from what I understand.
Yeah. And to their point, I agree. I don't think that they should have to pay the fee that I paid to go in for this amendment. I think if they need to put a driveway in for whatever reason it may be, I think they should be allowed to do that. There's two other houses on 12th Street that already have front driveways. So with certain circumstances, I think they should be definitely allowed to put that in.
Which opens up additional questions, but for now, I'll pass on to my colleagues. Councilor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Mr. Fisher, a question for you.
Sorry.
I had one point to make. Next year, it is important to note that next year, and starting in 2025, the London Road ARP will be undergoing its five-year review. So that is something that could potentially be looked at during the review of the plan next year.
And without cost review, because we're going to be reviewing it anyways. So this is something that could be with council. Without somebody having to come forward, we could look at that. And it's not going to burden anyone with costs.
Potentially.
Potentially. Okay. Thank you very much. Councilor Croson.
Thank you, Mayor Higgin. Mr. Fisher, what is the year of construction of the existing houses on those two properties?
I believe it's early 1900s for those properties.
Are you sure the one isn't in 1890?
The one on 408 is in 1890, but it's not, it does not have any historical designation.
But it's one of the 10 oldest houses in Lethbridge.
Yeah, it could be, yeah.
It is. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Higgin.
Thank you. Councilor Palladino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This was something I have to ask, I don't know if it was Mr. Fisher or Mr. Wurzer that said the London Road Neighborhood Association either supports or doesn't support this application.
Yeah, they do support the project.
They do support the project. Okay. Good. I'll save my comments for later.
Councilor Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Wurzer. Just, if I could, if this does not get approved, what's the next step for you?
I would just be selling the project. I will point out that last year, I brought a similar project in front of council, and I drove by it yesterday, and the house is abandoned. It's still sitting there. It has zero use, and nothing has happened with it. So I'll just sell the properties. I don't know what will happen from there, but it's, yeah.
Is, do you, can you conceive of any kind of compromise?
To be honest, I know that's always the question. So I do a lot of this stuff. I just sold a property to a gentleman on Depp Boulevard. I think he came to you guys about an amendment, 237 Depp Boulevard. That house sold for $385. He had to demo it, do an abatement, get services in. He's into that for over $400,000. He's building a single-family house. Likely, I think he'll be into it for about $1.2 to $1.5 billion. So that gives you some context of what redeveloping these two homes looks like, if you're going to put a single-family in. Even duplexes, you just don't see them anymore, because it's just not a feasible thing for us as builders and developers. And we are a business, and we're trying to, you know, that's part of it, right? So...
So I mean, obviously, parking is the biggest issue here, right?
Yes, yeah. I will mention, Mike, you know, brought up some good points, too, that my side of the road of 12th and 4th doesn't have permitted parking, which I think it should have. But it was advised to me that, from the city, that if the project gets approved, then there should be a traffic impact assessment done, and then at that point, decide if there should be permanent parking, which, again, I think there should be to protect, you know, their parking, my parking, and I think it would be great for that street, but... But again, yeah, that was, that was a request of the city, so...
Right, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Werzer, actually, before, sorry. Question I have, so, so we're hearing that we do have, it's going to be looked at, the ARP is going to be looked at next year. Now, you've got this property here, and if it doesn't get going right now, if it is delayed till next year, till there's the opportunity to look at this, to possibly find some answers, I know you're a developer, and, and trust me, it's, it's a business, you, you don't want to sit on something for too long, you need to realize some cash return on, on that investment. Is that going to be something that could, would, and, and you don't have to answer this to steer you away if, if we're waiting for ARP to find a, a happy medium. We, we know that we need housing, we understand, and I think we've heard, again, from, from folks, that, that it's, it's not, the housing, it's not development. Parking seems to be the number-one thing. If we can find a way to mitigate that, are you able to, to, is that something that you, you could look at till next year? Again, you don't have to answer that if you don't want to, but just curious.
I think I can. It's, to me, it's, it's, it's not feasible, it's too much of a risk. I mean, I'm waiting another year, plus another six months to go in for the, you know, again, the rezoning. Both homes, to answer Counselor Carlson's questions, they're very old homes. I just recently had to get into a bit of a, a fight with the insurance company, just to keep the insurance going on both of them, because they are older, you know, the staircases don't meet today's code, the basements don't meet today's code. And so it's becoming quite difficult just to insure the properties as they are. And to, I guess, bring it up to today's code, the cost to do that would be
Prohibitive.
Very substantial, yeah. It's, it's not, it's not feasible.
All right.
So, yeah.
Thank you. Any more questions for my colleagues? All right. Sorry, Counselor Carlson.
It's basically related to all of the...
Jeff Carlson.
I'm not going to answer, Mr. Mayor. I'm in a meeting. Just a question through to our, our development officers, maybe. We had the postal strike happen. We put up signs on the property. There's several today that are coming forward. I've been driving by and seeing, are the, have those been well-received? Because I would like, to me, they're brilliant. And I'd like to see them used, so we're not just relying, as Mr. Logan said, on mailouts to 60 meters, but everyone who walks by or drives by the property sees it and goes, oh, there's something happening here. Is it something, yeah, could be something happening. Is that something we are looking at continuing? Because in my mind, it's, it, it's a really good move forward.
So to your worship, through to Counselor Carlson, we did a bit of sort of problem-solving on the fly with the postal strike, and we did have to contact our sign shop in the Transportation Department and try to rig something up. We, we borrowed the Sandwich Board signs, they're not ours, so we would have to actually go out and procure some. I think just from the staff sort of driving by, they were well-received. Certainly in our land use bylaw renewal, we could look at changing the notification to include that, if that's something council is interested in. I don't think with the wind, we had too many issues with them blowing over. That is always a concern here in Lethbridge, but overall, I think it worked fairly well.
Excellent. Thank you. I really appreciate that information, because I, I liked, I liked them there.
Thank you. Counselor Campbell.
Ms. Garing, if just, I'm just getting back to parking, and I just wish that we could find a compromise, and I know that, I mean, everyone wants that, but I, from your point of view, and from what you have available to you, and what, what you can brainstorm, and what, what can happen? What can, how can we make this work?
So London Road is a really unique area.
Yep.
We put the driveway limitations on there to preserve the walkability and to preserve the boulevard and street trees. So it's a compromise, right? If you decide that you want to allow people to put in driveways, then you're going to interrupt the boulevard, and you're going to lose the street trees. So that's a, that's another compromise there as well. The developer has stated six minimum. He may be able to get more parking stalls out of that. I think it is perhaps a values question that council needs to consider, is, I don't know that people are driving as much, and if you're going to locate in that type of unit, and you don't have a parking stall, I would suggest that maybe you want to go to a different apartment in a different area of town where they supply parking. So we have a mixture of apartments in Lethbridge. We've seen a lot of multifamily development over the past year. We've got some good apartment complexes that have lots of parking for people who have two cars. And now we have a different sort of a choice for somebody. You want to work downtown, you want to live here, and you want to walk, this is a great place for you. So it is self-selection, to a certain degree. Nobody has to live here. But if they choose to live here, they know what they're buying or renting.
Just on the other side, do, do people who, if that, the six-plex opens up, will they pay on top of that for parking in that complex? Or is that between him and the...
Question for the developer, I'll have Mr. Werzer answer that.
Would, okay. Would you, yeah, sure. Would that be something, you would, you would charge parking for those people, or?
No, no.
Okay, so...
That would, that parking is specifically for the six units that are there. The suites are meant to be for, yeah, walkable, bikeable use. The parking stalls, I'll just note too, that the city is making it mandatory that, obviously I can't go and rent them out separately to make sure that they're used for their purpose, so...
So the parking, you have the stalls, the six stalls there?
Yes.
Right, that's what, that's the plan? So they'd be off, off...
They're off the lane.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And again, I, I just, I have to emphasize the fact that I think if you imagine that 225 feet with driveways going in it, it, just beyond the look of it, it, I, I think you're going to kill the parking for all the businesses around there and the residents when they have neighbors, friends come or whatever. So I, I kind of agree with the flex-use parking, but again, I would have no problem putting in the driveways, but it would only benefit me, nobody else, so...
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Heard of that. To our, to our administration, I, I've heard, I believe, that there was a few different homes there that do have driveways, that the ARP does not have it. Is this the process that they went in and applied and, and went through the process to have that changed? I'm just, I'm just wondering. I thought I heard there's a few others in the area. And if the ARP does not allow it, why do we have some?
Thank you for the question. And I'll just answer this one, just because I worked on the London Roads ARP. So the, the London Road ARP was developed with the residents and the Neighborhood Association, and it's based around a number of character-defining elements that people identified for that neighborhood that they really valued. And one of the, the key ones that we heard again and again was the street trees, the boulevards, the kind of unbroken sidewalks. And so the rules about driveways were put in to, to preserve that. And that's what people wanted at the time. It doesn't apply to every property in London Road, so it's based on the, the alleyways. If the rear alleyway is less than four meters wide, then we consider it not necessarily adequate for modern vehicles, and so you are allowed to put in a front driveway. If your alleyway is more than four meters wide, then you're generally not allowed to put in a new front driveway. If there were any existing curb cuts and front driveways that were there before the plan was adopted in January 2018, then obviously those stay. And if that property redevelops, they can keep the driveway as well. It's just that you can't put in a, a brand-new one in a new curb cut. And, you know, over time, even if you can keep the street trees in between driveways and curb cuts, when that tree gets to the end of its life and dies, often you can't plant a new tree in the same spot again. So you tend to just, over time, lose the, the street trees altogether.
Thank you very much for that. Any further questions for my colleagues? Hearing none. I now call a public hearing closed. This matter may be decided later this afternoon, following a public hearing.
I now call to order the public hearing, sorry. I now call to order the public hearing for bylaw 6460 amendment to London Road area redevelopment plan regarding 524, 528, and 532, 13th Street South and bylaw 6461 land use bylaw amendment re 524, 528, 532, 13th Street South. In accordance with section 692.2 of the Municipal Government Act, there will be one presentation for both bylaws as bylaw 6441 is dependent on bylaw 6440. Procedure for this hearing will be that it will begin by calling on Ross Kilgar, the senior community planner, to provide background to the case. Anyone else who wishes to speak to either of these bylaws will then be called upon. We'll ask three times if there's anyone else who wishes to make a presentation. City council then have an opportunity to ask questions of any of the presenters. The hearing will then be closed. Consideration of second and third reading will be made by city council immediately following the public hearing. And before I get going, I do want to ask if any of my colleagues do have a conflict and if you can please, and I first of all got councillor Dodick.
Excuse me, yes, thank you. I find myself in a very unusual situation with respect to bylaws 640, 60, as well as 61, 62, 64, and 65. And the reason I find myself in a bit of an unusual situation is because on October 31 of this year, the province passed Bill 20, which is quite infamous for a number of things. But one of the things that Bill 20 did is that they amended portions of the Municipal Government Act. And on page 54 of the Bill 20, they added after 172, section 172 of the Municipal Government Act, and that's the section that provides situations where a councillor may excuse himself from taking part in any proceedings before council, and that would include a proceeding such as this public hearing. What was added by Bill 20 is the following. They added a section 172.1, and I won't read the entire thing, but it says, "When a councillor believes a councillor may have a conflict of interest or perceived conflict of interest in a matter before the council, the councillor may disclose the general nature of the conflict of interest or perceived conflict and do a number of certain things." They could abstain from voting, abstain from discussion of the matter, leave the room, and until discussion and voting on the matter are concluded. And that's the situation I find myself in. And I'll give you the general nature of why I feel I have perceived conflicts of interest, which is a new animal in terms of the Municipal Government Act. And the perceived conflict is that all of these bylaws deal with amendments to various land use bylaws regarding certain property which are identified in the agenda, which were identified in the notices that may have been sent out to whoever the notices were required to be sent out. And on one of them, bylaw 6460 specifically, is there is a large political sign on it with respect to a member of council who is absent from these proceedings but who is still a councillor. And the developers with respect to all five of these bylaws are the same. So the problem that it has for me is that it makes me very uncomfortable in terms of making an unbiased decision. The reality is, I have seen the sign. It is in my mind. I neither support nor not support the particular candidate. But what it does is it creates an impression in my mind, and maybe only my mind, that the developer of all of these, that these five bylaws deal with, may be promoting a candidate who is an on-leve member of this council. So I find myself in a position that if I vote one way, in favor, there might be a perception that people feel that somehow I've been swayed because the promoter has at least given the impression that they are supporting this member of council. If I vote the other way, the reverse holds through. So I'm caught in the middle. But for Bill 20, which was proclaimed law on October 31 of 2024, I would not be caught in this position. I would not have a pecuniary interest as it doesn't matter to my pocketbook which way any or all of these bylaws go in terms of succeeding or not succeeding. But the perceived conflict of interest, just by the use of the word perceived, the perception, and the perception is, and maybe only in my mind, but I'm entitled to make that decision, and I am. And interestingly enough, the subsequent section of the act says that there's no review of a councillor's decision whether I choose to absent myself. So it is a very personal decision, and every councillor may or may not make a decision that's similar, or may or may not feel the same as I do. In other words, it does not suggest in any way, shape, or form that by my leaving that in any way means that anyone else is in a perceived conflict of interest. I am in a perceived conflict of interest. I apologize. This is unusual situation. I'm leaving, unfortunately. I cannot leave the building because we have other work once this is finished, so that means I have to stay here. Thank you.
Councillor Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you councillor Dodick. I won't repeat what you just said because it was in my mind as well. Again, it's the unintended consequences of Bill 20 that we're all dealing with. They're all new. But I do have, if I can, your worship, before I likely follow my colleague, I do need some questions answered, if I can, and probably if Mr. Lowen is prepared to answer them. I'm just concerned because adding this new perceived conflict of interest, and I'm just not sure what the ramifications are. I assume if I do have a pecuniary interest in something, and I do not disclose it, it calls the entire process into question, and there can be some ramifications on whether the process is flawed, has to start over again. And my concern is that I would have the same feeling on this perceived conflict, that as councillor Dodick said, if you vote one way, you're said one thing; if you're vote the other way, you can be perceived the opposite way. Because it's perception, and I don't know why they put that very unambiguous or ambiguous word in there. So can you help me, what are the ramifications? If somebody, if the vote goes and somebody complains, does it call the entire process into question, or how does that proceed?
Ultimately, that would have to be decided by a judge on judicial review, and it becomes a very fact-specific determination. There are cases where somebody has voted that shouldn't have, that were upheld, and in other circumstances where they weren't. One difference that I think is important for councils to remember in the difference between pecuniary interest and conflict of interest is if you vote when you have a pecuniary interest that you haven't, you can, one consequence of that can be disqualification. Just quickly reviewing, I don't see that as a consequence for the conflict of interest, which is consistent with the government saying sometimes there are private interests that a councillor may be well-known for, and without a change to the legislation, you are required to vote unless you have a pecuniary interest. And so they wanted to give councillors the opportunity for where other private interests or interests of their family or their employer might be impacted, the opportunity to abstain or not participate in those votes. So that's the main difference there, and that's the rationale that the province gave in making that amendment.
Thank you for that. And just a process question probably then to Ms. Hilford. If quorum gets lost today, what is the process going forward?
Thank you for that. I actually discussed that with the city solicitor, so I will let him respond to that.
Well, if we lose quorum in today's meeting, we lose quorum and the meeting ends. What the consequences might be if a council permanently had the inability to do quorum, I would need to do some research and thinking on what we might be able to do in that. I'm not aware of that situation having arisen in the past, so I can't give a reasoned answer to that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I think I will excuse myself and will be sitting.
All right, councillor Parker.
Mine's completely opposite. My direct dependent works at London Road, so I have to excuse myself on that one. This is not a perception thing. This is just as stated by law, so I will be removed myself.
Thank you. This, again, this day today, I'll tell you what, what a different day that we have on council. I don't think I've seen one of these in 12 years. But with that, we do have four, five members of council, which qualifies for quorum. Bear quorum. We do need to have five. Are there any others that will declare a conflict?
If we don't declare conflict and get sued, like...
Yeah, Mike, please.
It's facetious. If we don't declare conflict and get sued, does councillor Dodick have to, you know, be our lawyer? Okay, okay, that's all I need to know.
All right, on a, thank you councillor Palladino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we don't have a quorum, okay, let me back up. We have at least two applications for an amendment to the London Road Neighborhood Association Plan, or the Area Redevelopment Plan. How could you possibly have a pecuniary interest in that? We should be able to proceed with those two, at least, the applications for the, to the amendment to the plan, and not the rezoning specifically.
They're connected in their mind.
They're all connected. One cannot go through without the other, is my understanding, is reading it earlier. Is that correct, Madam City Clerk?
I believe one's for the ARP and one's for the land use bylaw. ARP has to go first, then land use bylaw. Joel, do you want to chime in? Thank you.
So basically, in this case, the ARP change has to go before of the rezoning in order to be effective. So you could go and do that separately and just looking at the stuff, if there's any change, but that will, without that one, the other one cannot come forward. So that's why they are tied together.
All right, so I'm going to move forward with the public hearing for 6460 and 6461. Again, I went through all of the preamble there, and I do have Ross Kilgar, a senior community planner. Again, he will make the presentation and background to the case, and then after, we will go forward with asking if there's anyone in the community or in chambers here that wish to make a presentation. So Mr. Kilgar, the floor is yours.
Thank you and good afternoon. So as mentioned, I'll be presenting on these two bylaws, which both relate to the listed parcels on this slide. So looking at bylaw 6460 first, the applicant is Somis, and this is a proposed amendment to the London Road Area Redevelopment Plan. The proposed changes would allow building up to a maximum of 21 meters in height on these parcels only, and remove the requirement to pay a redevelopment levy, again, just on these parcels. And then bylaw 6461, same applicant, and this is a proposed rezoning or land use bylaw amendment, which would rezone the listed parcels from an existing direct control bylaw to a new direct control bylaw. And again, this is to facilitate the applicant developing the site to provide potentially up to 49 apartments maximum, or 47 apartments with commercial uses on the main floor. So in the left image, we can see the general location of the site on the east edge of London Road neighborhood, and in the right image, we can see a closer-in aerial photograph showing the site outlined in that green dashed line. In this aerial image, we can see the three parcels highlighted separately that form the site, and then we can see other parcels in the area outlined in black. So on this slide, I would just highlight that the site that we're looking at today is surrounded on three sides by public right-of-way. So on the east side, we have 13th Street South, which is a busy arterial road. To the north, we have 5A Avenue South, which is a local road, and to the west, there's a public lane running north-south. Beyond the north-south lane to the west are two parcels which are local commercial owned by London Road Market and used as their parking lot, and then to the south is London Road Market itself. So now just some oblique aerial photography. This is from the south facing north, from the east facing west, from the north facing south, and from the west facing east. You can see the parcels are currently vacant. And then down at street level, this is from the southeast corner of the site facing northwest, so London Road Market would just be off to the left of the photograph. This is from 13th Street South, about halfway up the edge of the site, facing into the site, from the northeast corner facing southwest, and from the northwest corner facing southeast. So in the foreground of this photo, you can see the curb ramp and the public laneway that runs north-south along the western boundary of the site. And then finally, the northwest corner facing into the site. So this slide shows the existing and proposed zoning of the site. So again, as I mentioned, it's direct control district currently, bylaw 5704 passed in 2011. The London Road Market parcel and their two additional parcels to the west that are used as their parking lots are zoned local commercial CL. The majority of the surrounding neighborhood in that pale yellow color is RL or low-density residential, and then there are a couple of R75 medium-density residential parcels to the west, and a couple of R150 high-density residential parcels to the northwest, as well as Edith Cavill Centre, which is a direct control zoning. So turning first to bylaw 6460, which is a proposed amendment to the London Road ARP, it would make two main changes to the plan, and that is to allow building up to... it would make two main changes to the plan, and that is to allow building up to a maximum 21 meters in height on these parcels only and to remove the requirement to pay a redevelopment levy, again, just for these parcels. So the ARP was adopted in 2018, and it's currently going through a five year review process, which will be going out to public engagement in 2025. However, that's not the subject of today's bylaws or presentation. So quoted on this slide is the current vision or the relevant parts from the current vision for the 13th Street South corridor, which the site forms part of. And so the first couple of paragraphs shown here would support the proposed redevelopment. However, the last paragraph quoted here would not. And so the proposed change is shown in this slide in red. So essentially, it just makes an exception for these three listed parcels, allowing them to build up to a maximum of 21 meters instead of two and a half stories as a current. So evaluating the proposed intensification of the site, as mentioned before, is surrounded on three sides by public right of way and on the fourth side by a commercial use. This kind of limits the impact that it would have in terms of adjacent properties. The current bylaw, the DC bylaw for the site dates back to 2011. However, that proposal was never actually constructed. And then since then, we have had other conversations with potential developers, which haven't gone as far as an actual rezoning application. The site is highly accessible in terms of nearby amenities, places of employment, downtown civic uses in the civic common block, schools and so on. And then turning to the proposed, the proposed change to not require payment of redevelopment levy. So the redevelopment levy is something that was implemented as part of the London Road ARP, and the previous London Road ARP dating back to 1982 also had a redevelopment levy. I will know that this is the only one that we have in effect in Lethbridge. And I searched for another one in Alberta and couldn't find one. So it is potentially the only redevelopment levy that's actually in effect today in the whole province. What it does is it requires a payment at development permit stage, so not not today. But if this rezoning was successful at development permit stage, they would be required to pay $1,500 per net additional dwelling unit. So because there were three previously single detached homes on the site, if they were to build 49 homes on the site, that would require a payment of $69,000. The ARP itself does contemplate, as quoted in the third bullet here, that we need to consider whether a redevelopment levy may actually discourage redevelopment and increase costs of housing. So that is something that we will be looking at as part of the five year review. The Municipal Government Act is very clear about what a redevelopment levy, the funds raised by redevelopment levy may be used for. So that's quoted here in the first bullet. So you'll note that it's just for land for a park or land for recreation facilities and so on. So it's not to be used for, for example, improving an existing park or existing recreation facilities and so on. So that's something we have to keep in mind when we think about what this money could go towards. So $69,000 would not buy, for example, one property in London Road to allow you to to tear that down and create a pocket park. So in reality, collecting redevelopment levy money, it may end up sitting, kind of waiting until enough is collected before you can actually take action with it, something to keep in mind. So turning to bylaw 6461, which is the proposed rezoning. This new direct control district has been based on two of our standard districts in the land use bylaw. So the R200 district, which is high density residential, and then commercial uses proposed are based on neighborhood commercial, which we feel would fit in with the context of the site. The only differences from the allowable uses in those two standard districts are shown in this table here. So business support services is quite similar to an office. It could be something like an architectural office, photocopying shop and so on. So we made that permitted use in the proposed direct control district. And then the other listed uses we felt were not suitable for this context. The proposed direct control district would require a minimum of 14 regular parking stalls, two barrier free parking stalls, and then bicycle parking as required in the land use bylaw. That is a minimum, so it does not prohibit the applicant or future owner from providing more than this minimum parking requirement. The setbacks are based on creating a built environment similar to London Road Market, so having any potential commercial uses close to the 13th Street sidewalk. And in fact, there, any commercial uses would have to front onto 13th Street South. They could not front onto 5A Avenue South, which is a local road with residences. The sign rules would not allow signs that may be distracting or not suitable for this type of neighborhood. So for example, no billboards, no digital signage and so on. There is also a required step back, similar to a setback, but on upper stories. So to the north end of the site above fourth floor level, there would be a step back of a minimum of four meters, so reducing the the height to the north, to the residences to the north and any potential overshadowing. The proposed rezoning is in line with relevant policies in the South Saskatchewan Regional Plan and the Municipal Development Plan around promoting intensification of existing residential neighborhoods and a mix of commercial and residential uses. There's a number of relevant policies, of course, in the London Road ARP, which are quoted in full in your submission report. But I would just highlight this one policy, which does contemplate the need for changes to the London Road ARP to facilitate proposals that otherwise would be in line with the vision for the plan overall. So the applicant hand delivered these invitations, you can see in the bottom right corner of the slide, to addresses within 60 meters of the subject parcels. They held their first open house on July 10th, and about 12 people attended that. And then they held a second open house on November 6th with about 25 people attending that. The proposal's also been reviewed by city technical staff and no servicing issues have been identified. We advertised the public hearing on the city website. We took the unusual step of sending two application notification letters to the parcels highlighted in this slide. We sent out the usual initial notification letter when an application was received and then a second one when the applicant made a significant change to the the number of units and number of stories. We also, with the Canada Post strike, placed signs on the site itself and hand delivered public hearing notification letters to the parcel shown. And of course, the public hearing was advertised in the Lethbridge Herald as well. Received numerous emails and calls on these proposed bylaws. The concerns raised were along the main themes of increased vehicle traffic, effects of on on street parking, effects on London Road Market's parking lot, effects on city infrastructure, overshadowing, lack of green space, safety and privacy. So in conclusion, the proposed amendments to the London Road ARP would be limited to the subject parcels and facilitate the redevelopment of the site. So our department supports the proposed amendment to the plan and recommends that council consider this report as information for the public hearing. And then concluding on bylaw 6461, the proposal complies with the relevant policies in the SSRP and MDP. And so the department supports the amendments of land use bylaw and recommends that council consider this report for information. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kilgore. We also have the applicant here, Scott Varga and Kendall Haczkowski, to make a presentation.
Well, first of all, I've never had two councillors leave before I started speaking. But I would like to make it clear that the applicant and the current property owner are totally separate. Somis Property Group is the applicant, and we have not purchased the land. We also have no connection or express interest in any of the political party related to the land and the signage. So good afternoon, your worship, and members of council. My name is Scott Varga, and I'm here to present Neighborhood Block, which is an innovative development program that addresses the growing housing crisis while thoughtfully enhancing the neighborhoods of London Road and Victoria Park. So this project reflects a commitment to holistic affordability, community integration and modern living. Neighborhood Block is a contemporary five story residential development program located in London Road and Victoria Park, which is strategically adjacent to downtown and the warehouse district. These locations offer convenient access to employment hubs and services, making it ideal for a diverse range of residents. The key features include 39 residential units with 85% market housing and 15% designated as affordable under CMHC guidelines. So a five story building, complete with modern amenities designed for urban lifestyles, which includes a rooftop patio and gardening spaces, a games room, co working area and a library, secured interior bicycle parking for active transportation, and a design that integrates with the neighborhood, prioritizing privacy, reduced shadowing, stepping down to three stories and mature tree retention. Now, Lethbridge faces a pressing affordability challenge. Residential values have risen by 16% in the past year, exacerbating housing costs. Limiting housing starts and tighter supply continue to push prices higher, creating barriers for many residents. Neighborhood Block is part of a broader strategy to help alleviate this crisis. Adding upwards of 120 units across the three sites proposed here tonight in mature neighborhoods, efficiently utilizing existing vacant land. Introducing affordable housing options that meet the needs of students and young professionals and empty nesters, as well as those that desire a more connected urban living environment, which does not require vehicle ownership. So the benefits of Neighborhood Block are fourfold. Increasing housing supply and diversity by activating vacant parcels, the project adds much needed housing choices in a sought after, transit oriented neighborhood. Affordable units ensure inclusivity, while market rate housing strengthens the local economy. Encouraging active and sustainable living with direct access to public transportation, bike lanes and secured bicycle parking, residents can embrace multimodal transportation options. Rooftop gardening and modern shared spaces foster community interaction and promote well being. Strengthening mature neighborhoods. This development enhances the vibrancy of London Road and Victoria Park while preserving its character by retaining mature trees and building with quality materials. Economic and social benefits. The project supports local business and schools by increasing foot traffic and activity in nearby districts. It reflects a sustainable approach to urban growth and leveraging existing infrastructure and reducing urban sprawl. Now, we prioritize collaboration with the community through robust engagement efforts. We had met with Planning Review Team, PRT, in March 2021, December 2023 and May of 2024. We met with London Road Neighborhood Association Board in June of 2024. And in June of 2024, we went door knocking to over 100 homes to meet neighbors and hand out project flyers. We conducted open houses in July and November of 2024 to gather public input. And we have responded to 100% of individual community inquiries to date. So from these sessions, we heard feedback related to parking, density and infrastructure. And we've proactively incorporated these solutions. So number one, parking. So onsite parking is designed at 0.5 stalls per unit, balancing accessibility and minimizing car dependency. Multimodal transportation options include proximity to bus benches and adjacent bike lanes, interior bicycle parking at 0.77 stalls per unit, promoting active transportation and reducing the need for additional car parking. Infrastructure. All required upgrades to utilities and connections will comply with administration's directives, ensuring no undue burden to local infrastructure. And density. The building is oriented and designed to respect neighbors' privacy, including rooftop patios and windows positioned to minimize overlooking adjacent properties, step back upper floors to reduce shadow impacts, and the retention of existing mature trees and additional plantings to ensure the project blends with the natural surroundings. So Somis understands that change can be difficult. However, what we are proposing from a density perspective is not different from existing multifamily developments within London Road and Victoria Park. And similarly to the images shown, we are prioritizing these existing trees to screen and visually integrate the buildings into the site. So Neighborhood Block matters because this development represents a thoughtful solution to Lethbridge's housing challenges while delivering significant benefits that are supported by the Southwest Alberta graduate retention strategy and aligned with the municipal housing strategy's outcomes. So addressing affordability by increasing supply and introducing affordable units, the project helps ease market pressures. Promoting sustainability, its design encourages sustainable living through active transportation and efficient land use. Fostering vibrancy, by adding density to an underutilized parcel, it contributes to a safer, more dynamic and livelier neighborhood. And strengthening community, the location provides the opportunity for an increase in nearby social, recreation, commercial and business vitality. And in conclusion, Neighborhood Block is more than a housing development. It is an investment in Lethbridge's future. It addresses housing needs across the continuum, enhances neighborhood vitality and reflects a thoughtful, community focused approach to urban growth. We've listened to feedback, we've refined the design and are proud to present a project that balances progress with respect for our community with the intent to welcome new people and their stories to Lethbridge and the neighborhood. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that, Mr. Varga. I do have a list of speakers for this particular public hearing, so I'll first call on them and then I will go to a public for those who have not registered. And so to start off, a Mr. Lance Smith. If Lance Smith is here to come to speak to this.
Good afternoon, Mayor Higgins and City Council members.
Can you just move the mic over to your... There you are. Thank you.
This better?
You betcha.
My name is Lance Smith. I own the property 1265A, south in Lethbridge. My property is 75 feet or 23 meters west of the proposed development site. Naturally, I'm opposed to the development, given a six story building. Again, the numbers changed. Scott just referred to it as a five story. The second notice I got was six story. Anyway, we'll refer to it as a development going forward. Will shade my property and destroy my privacy I have secured over the years with an eight foot fence on the east side of my my house. The London Road Area Redevelopment Plan would normally protect me from these issues, but now Ross Kegler and Somis want to delete these rules in place and bulldoze this development through city council with new bylaws. I'm not going to waste time going on about parking issues, infrastructure issues. We all know full well these systems will be put to the test. Ross Kilgore and Somis both have quick answers for all my concerns and my neighbor and my neighbors as well. It seems neither party cares to hear the concerns or just don't care, keeping their eye on their prize. I don't believe city, the city of Lethbridge is that desperate for redevelopment, that even these bad proposals are entertained. And the news I see housing starts are up 305%. These development, these developments manage to play by the rules. I don't know why Somis is so special where we're going to delete some rules, eliminate some levies. Why does the property owner Brad Kirk need Somis to be his front man? Maybe because he is name, he is a named director on the board of the Lethbridge Housing Authority. And some might think this is a bad look. Constructing a combined 84, one to two bedroom units on both sites, the east and west side of 13th Street, the other one hasn't been presented yet. On one of your busier intersections in Lethbridge is not the best place for the development. Raising the population by 200-ish, given and take the numbers that keep changing, the intersection would be congested more with vehicle and foot traffic. It's already congested there enough. Yes, we need more housing, but is this the best way to go about it? Why disrespect the properties that have been paying taxes for more than a century and decrease their marketable property value? My property value will drop when I go to sell because of this development, I'm sure. London Road Market has been in, has been a local neighborhood store for 100 years. It is possibly in jeopardy because of the parking issue, him being able to get supplies in and out of the store. Indeed, this is a special day for me. City council is reaching into my pocket by increasing my property taxes to cover the Lethbridge Exhibition Board debacle and reduce my marketable value. and reduce my marketable value of my property and leave me vulnerable to foundation and wastewater infrastructure damage during the construction phase. It saddens me to think, after owning and paying taxes on my property for forty-two years and being a good steward, keeping it to fit into the historical London Road neighborhood vision, at the end of the day, my worth to City Council will be acceptable collateral damage. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Brenda McDonald?
Hi, good afternoon. Can I put that down just slightly? Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I bought my house in 2016, and I've worked really hard and invested time and money and sweat into my home. And now it's proposed to sort of plunk a large complex down onto my corner of the world, and I'm actually one-hundred percent opposed to this proposal. More money, more -- sorry, more people, more issues. This is a very large structure to squeeze into a limited space. Where is the integrity of the neighborhood, of this beautiful London Road community? My main concerns are it's too big of a building. It's six stories high. It's just too big for this corner. Too many apartments, too many people. I believe that there'll be pets, so dogs, cats, et cetera. No parking. Mr. Varga stated there will be up to twenty parking spaces. Where will those parking spaces be? London Road Market parking will be even more congested than it already is. The parking lot is already a total zoo for me to access the alley. So what's it going to be like when you add that many more people to an already very congested area? Infrastructure. It's a very old neighborhood. The houses are old. The sewer, the water lines, the electrical lines, everything is old. So how do you incorporate that many units, that big amount of a building, into that small area without affecting us, the neighbors? I don't want the extra demands generated by this large building created issues from us in our homes. I think the cost to the city to increase the capacity on these services would be more massive. Many impacts to the traffic. I put down, oh my gee, it's already so busy on Thirteenth Street. I go home around four o'clock in the afternoon, and boy, I tell you, trying to get home is just crazy. And then at 2:00 AM, I'm on Sixth Avenue. Some of those cars need to be fixed, or they're just very disrespectful people of others as they drive with outrageously noisy vehicles. This is a personal thing for me, and you can call me a prude, but I don't really like the smell of marijuana, and I would not enjoy having more pot smokers in my neighborhood or individuals under influence of drugs or alcohol. And Mr. Varga told me the building will be non-smoking, so then I assume the smokers have to be outside, so perhaps they'll come down to my alley, and they'll be there, and you know, yuck. I wouldn't enjoy that. Where will the people walk their pets? And how will they keep their cats from coming over and using my garden for their little box? There could be multiple dogs, which could potentially be a lot of barking, which is terribly unsettling. I want to feel safe. I walk a lot for exercise, and I want to feel safe leaving my property. I want to feel safe on my sidewalks in my neighborhood. I want to feel safe on my property and in my house. I'm also concerned about my property taxes going up with this new apartment building or buildings, and I'm concerned about the value of my house depreciating. Eventually, as I age or I die, I or my family would have to sell my house, and who would want to buy a house so close to a large complex that blocks the sun? You don't get sun in your yard anymore. I wrote to Mr. Kilgore about my thoughts, more people, more problems, and he replied, "More people create positive results." And I just don't agree with that statement. Mr. Kilgore also stated that the cost of new construction today is very high. A certain number of units are needed to make the development financially feasible. So to me, it all comes down to money. Does anybody really care about the existing neighbors, about this being my forever home, a place that makes me happy? Maybe it's all about money, because money talks. I didn't receive any notices from Sumer for June and July, and I wrote to Scott Varga on August the 25th, and I didn't get a reply from him, which is very disappointing. I did attend the open house at the post office, because this is really important to me. And I didn't get an opportunity to talk to Mr. Varga, and that was more my fault because I had another appointment. But I left him a note and my concerns, and I guess he did email me back then, but it's regarding the project and my disappointment that he didn't reply to me, to my email, because it shows a lack of caring and also maybe mismanagement. A project of this size would need a really strong project manager. It would also need an extremely competent property manager to keep these complexes well-run. When I was going to school as a child, I needed to go past an apartment complex. And over the years, it was a very troubled place, falling apart. Scary things were happening there. It just isn't a good memory for me of multiple dwellings. So to summarize, the proposed complex is far too big for that corner. I'm very concerned about the extra load of people in the area. I'm also concerned about the infrastructure, about the amount of traffic and accidents that this building could cause due to the extra people and traffic that we're going to be bringing around that area, and how difficult it will be to turn onto Thirteenth Street from Fifth Avenue A. So I put down, hey, you know what? Maybe we can spend more taxpayers' dollars, and we can put in a traffic light there to keep everybody safe. So let's think about a proper place for a project of this size. Thirteenth Street and Fifth Avenue A is just not the place for it, and neither is Thirteenth Street and Sixth Avenue. Oh, a six-story-high building with a rooftop patio, so people can sit up there.
Mr. Varga, if you can start wrapping up over your time.
And look down at our backyards, and that isn't something to look forward to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. I do have some other speakers that are actually registered for 6460 and 6461. They are being looked at together, so if you could speak to both of those, and that would be Mr. Ty Megato.
Hello. Thanks for your time. So yeah, my name's Ty Megato. I live on 5A Avenue South, so right across from Lance, who just recently spoke. I am one-hundred percent opposed to this development as well. I moved my family here three years ago and picked this London Road area for that reason of being a historic neighborhood. I read the London Road ARP in that area. It states all small and medium-scale residential development shall not exceed two-point-five stories in height. That was a big, big thing for us to move there. Also, just, it's already been stated, but the parking situation, to me, seems unrealistic. Where I think I read at one point it was seventeen stalls or point-five per unit. Well, if they're going to put in forty-nine homes in that, it just doesn't seem realistic that that's going to work. Just the sheer size of it, to me, is troubling. So that's my main concern. That road, that whole area is historic. I just feel like this type of a structure is not warranted. And even from that one picture Scott showed, it even looks crazy on a picture, let alone in person. So yeah, the rest has already been said, but I do, yeah, I just strongly oppose it. It's just way too big for this neighborhood. And the London Road ARP, I know it's going to be re-looked at next year. I hope they don't change the two-point-five stories. It's all residential where I live on 5A and surrounding. I just think it's a beautiful spot, and this structure would, I think, destroy it, in my opinion. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Megato. Sandra Beckner.
Good afternoon, council. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to this issue. My name is Sandra Beckner, and I own the Fourplex located on 5A Avenue South. We purchased it in 1993. We chose this investment property because of its location. I've owned and managed it for thirty-plus years. As you know, London Road was recognized as the best neighborhood in Canada by The Old House Magazine in 2012. It's recognized for its charm, its historical architecture, and its community spirit. This designation was widely celebrated and mentioned in local outlets in Lethbridge, and it is still a point of pride. One major key to the continued success of the neighborhood is the London Road Market. It's the hub, and it's the destination for people. Every day, you have customers coming to pick up groceries and take advantage of those specials. It's a significant part of the community. It employs local people. It maintains a small-store environment in touch with the people it serves. One of the key issues is that the store has eighty percent of the store clients drive by car. The summer market's a highlight for fresh produce. Majority of people drive. This leads to analyzing this proposed development because it's not adequately addressed for parking. The immediate obvious concern is to build a high-rise with forty-nine units. Twelve parking spaces is not enough parking for a structure this size. This will jeopardize the viability of the store. This proposal is thirty-seven parking spaces short. That's only one car per tenant, and there's never it's not even counting the visitors that come. So where will the tenants park? They'll park in the store parking lot. Parking permits do not work, and it causes major managing issues. It takes time and money to address those conflicts and tensions that'll develop in the neighborhood. Further, the store needs additional parking for the trucks that unload several times per week. Customers cannot access that store. They're not going to go there. Their margins are so slim, they will go down. We're a prairie city. We're not a large city like Calgary and Edmonton where there's high density. People own cars, and they drive where they need to go. City Council has enforceable laws in place right now for sufficient parking there. That's great. Over the years, I've acquired professional clients because the store serves the needs for groceries, meals, items delivered. It's one of the reasons I've had low vacancy rates. My tenants drive to the university, the college, the workplaces. They drive. They cannot easily bike or walk to these locations, especially in winter. And if there isn't sufficient parking, the new residents will need to park on my street in front of my place. They will take my tenant's parking spot. Not only that, but property values will be affected, too. Who's going to manage a large structure like that successfully? Not all of them are managed well in Lethbridge. More people in small space will lead to more problems and more safety concerns, and a decline in the vibrancy of the community. And so then you're going to have to deal with all those issues. Please be reminded that in Calgary tomorrow, there is going to be a major pushback by the residents because of the change of land use. Witness the canceling recently of the Glenmore Landing residence who proposed builds there. Same thing. So I know that you have to hear two sides of the story, and you should. And I know there's a real need to fill housing, but I don't think this is the right place. You need to search for another place to put this high-rise, these high-rises in. London Road cannot handle this. That store will go down. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Beckner. Next, Arlene Paya.
Thank you. I actually didn't register to speak, but that's okay. I live at 512 Thirteenth Street South, which is two houses to the north of the proposed development. I share all the concerns that have been raised. Just one additional one I'd like to add is the disruption of the actual construction itself. If these two proposed locations are approved, there's absolutely zero space to put equipment, material, cranes, things like that. So in addition to the ongoing issues, if they are constructed related to parking and congestion, the three or four years it would take to construct these buildings, how they're physically proposing that that would be done in such a busy area on Thirteenth Street and Sixth Avenue South. That's the only thing I wanted to add to the concerns that have already been raised.
Thank you, Ms. Paya. Appreciate that. Mr. David Gurr.
Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. First off, I'd like to say I left my pitchforks and torches in my truck, so I think I deserve a thank you for that. Ladies and gentlemen, we are London Road Market. We are ninety-five years young. We are a generational local business, currently warehousing thirty-four employees, and through ninety-five years, the store has employed more than thirty-six hundred employees. We see an average of six-hundred-and-seventy-five customers per day and approximately five-hundred-and-seventy-five customer vehicles per day, believe it or not. Because Belinda's here, we threw a little parking history into it. Around 1965, the city of Lethbridge removed all angle parking away from the store along Sixth Avenue and Thirteenth Street due to the twinning of the lanes. So Hofer and Wood then purchased the two neighboring houses and turned them into parking lots, which are in yellow there. A little quote from a previous owner, Gay Westwood. "We purchased those lots behind us for survival" when the city took the parking away from us on Thirteenth Street and Sixth Avenue. So a little parking summary. Ladies and gentlemen, we have thirty parking stalls in this parking lot. As designated there, the two are handicap and/or customer parking, ten parking stalls for staff, which are in yellow, and/or customer parking, and eighteen regular parking stalls, which are all in white, three on the street. So one of the big keys to success, keep those stalls turning. So when we take a look at the parking lot visitors, currently, London Road Market accepts approximately five-hundred-and-seventy-five customer vehicles daily, ten fifty-three-foot semi-trailers weekly, nine three-ton trucks weekly, fifteen one-ton trucks weekly, multiple single-car delivery vans, repair vehicles, current residents due to street cleaning, snow route announcements, parties, et cetera, two garbage trucks weekly, skid steers when snow appears, drug dealers, kijiji meetups, and extramarital affairs. And I wish I was joking about that. So some of our parking lot challenges, ladies and gentlemen. Currently, London Road Market can only accept deliveries through one delivery bay, which is in yellow, located at the edge of the customer parking lot and/or on the south lot attached to the building. Additional parking by delivery drivers is utilized in red by the adjacent lots and/or property. Want to control that? Oh, you sure? So some parking challenges, ladies and gentlemen. Currently, fifty-three-foot trailers must be received from the north, either on Fifth Avenue or Fifth Avenue A coming up through the alley, and be pointed to the south. Fifty-three-foot trailers require most of the customer parking in white to be emptied to back into the delivery bay. If any vehicles other than stalls ten, nine, one, and two are filled, the trailer cannot back up. All other delivery vehicles require spaces fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eight, seven, and six to be cleared to be able to back in and out of the delivery bay. Due to spacing barriers in adjacent lot, fifty-three-foot trailers cannot physically back up while pointing north. And if you think I'm kidding, this summer, we had a truck that almost broke his kingpin because he tried coming from the north and swinging in. And that was three hours in the parking lot that we lost. Lastly, ninety percent of our current sales come through those fifty-three-foot trailers. And a couple of pictures up here, ladies and gentlemen. The top one is the city of Lethbridge, who graciously filled the potholes in the alley, parking their equipment on our property. The second photo, coincidentally the same day, is a fifty-three-foot trailer who came in the wrong way. The third photo is me on the street. The third photo is me on the street, stopping four lanes of traffic, trying to back this guy up blind. And then the fourth photo is an example of what we have to do to get a 53-foot trailer into our building. So the proposed units, ladies and gentlemen, we're talking about the one beside us to the north and the one to the east of us. Regardless of hopes and dreams, the proposed unit will bring around 94 units and up to 188 souls into a half-block radius. Along with that are four businesses, which are going to require staff and customer parking. The developers are proposing a total of 49 stalls. Most of these stalls are going to be taken by the businesses and the patrons. Any additional spillover instinctively will come into our parking lot or the property of 1909, which is the former cutting company Kitty Corner to us. Now regardless of hopes and goals, ladies and gentlemen, of people walking, biking, by the development or the city of Lethbridge, according to the Alberta Registry, vehicle registries have not gone down. This is not me making a statement, this is fact. So a little math down there, if people can't quite do it for them. 188 souls times one car apiece is 188 cars. 16 staff between the four businesses, 12 customer stalls, three stalls per business, gives you 216 cars. 216 minus 49 is 167 cars going where? To the London Road Market, 1909, and the neighborhood. So ladies and gentlemen, reality says, physically, cars must go somewhere. Once again, I'm not making this up. With good intentions in hand, citizens will park where available, resulting in them parking in our property, which will result in reduced availability on parking spaces for our staff and our loyal patrons. And I'm sorry for the zoo that caused your entry and exit. I really am. Truth of the matter is, based off of our sales and year-end financial statements, if we permanently lose two parking stalls, we would not meet our financial requirements needed to cover the cost of operating this business. The margins are slim, ladies and gentlemen. If cars are parked in the lot that prevent our trucks from backing in, it will hamper our ability to do business, commerce, resulting in lost sales and potential financial penalties. Subsequently, if vehicles are parked when the truck is trying to get out, we may again incur a financial penalty and idling trucks as we cannot get them out because of cars parked that don't belong to us. Just yesterday, we got a truck at 12:30 in the afternoon, a bad time for us. Took us 15 minutes to get the parking lot cleared, took us 35 minutes to get the truck out. And that's with our customers that we knew were in the store. During construction, when access is reduced to entrances, we would not be able to continue business in an orderly manner, resulting in lost sales. Once again, as the presenter prior to us said, where are all these construction vehicles going to go? They have to go somewhere, and if we can't get those trucks in from the north, I'm in trouble. So remember the keys to success, ladies and gentlemen? Keep the stalls turning. How do we do that with vehicles that don't belong on our property? So ladies and gentlemen, a few solutions as proposed. I kind of think this is a joke, so maybe we can ride unicorns to and from the property, and the poop from the unicorns will feed Justin's cars. In a more serious note, we're going to have to start towing. That's a reality, that's a cost that's going to come to us, and if you want to talk about confrontations, we're going to have to start dealing with stuff, and people are not going to be happy when they find out their car is gone. Another solution, ladies and gentlemen, they can put a parking pad underneath or something of the nature. But at the end of the day, ladies and gentlemen, the solutions are simple. You pay taxes like every other neighboring business resident, you pay the levy per apartment as per the rules, and you follow the rules as they're written, that everybody should be playing by. I think it's pretty plain and simple. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. If you have any follow-up questions before we sit down, I'd love to take them.
Thank you. Questions will come later. Mr. Duangur, you have anything to add? You have five minutes, obviously. We could turn the mic on where you're sitting if that's easier.
No, I'm fine. Good, good, good. Good day. My name is Duangur. My wife Wendy and I own London Road Market. We've owned the store for 34 years, and I've been here at the store for 52 years. London Road Market and its predecessors of stores, Hofer's Grocery, Hofer &amp; Wood, Value Village, have been serving the residents of London Road area since 1929, nearly 100 years. The store's always been family-owned, with each successive owner working and learning the trade from the previous owner for many years. I was hired in 1973 by Mr. Gay Westwood, who trained under my grandfather in the 1950s. And today, we are training who may be a fifth-generation meat cutter and third-generation grocer, all at this location. Today, our family-owned business is under attack by a developer that has little regard for a company's survival and by a council that seemingly has made up its mind on this development. I say this in response to comments from some council members saying things like, "Why don't you sell? And if parking is a problem, why don't you put up a fence?" And it's a great idea. Lethbridge needs housing. I believe that these buildings will be built as low-cost housing units, probably administered by Lethbridge Housing Authority, and these buildings will not be used for young professionals who have decided not to own cars. Parking will be a huge issue, and council and the developer know this. Even people that are living in low-cost housing will have cars. Social workers will have cars and need a place to park. Relatives and friends of the tenants have cars, and our company's parking lot will be the prime target. Having 48 parking stalls on these sites is not sufficient. Our parking lot will bear the brunt of the parking. Remember, over 80 apartments and commercial business entities need more than 48 parking stalls. As per Alberta Registry, vehicle registrations have not decreased in Alberta in the last four years. People are doing more driving, not less. We cannot get police to ticket or tow vehicles out of our lots. Today, we have to call 311 and hope for some service with them. Or we can tow vehicles ourselves, which we have a legal right to do. This, of course, will lead to confrontation, but confrontation brought on by the developer and council if it chooses to support these applications. We do not encroach on the neighborhood for the limited amount of parking available now. As David has alluded, we have over 600 customers daily, most driving here, along with trailers and other deliveries, and we need those stalls to keep turning. We will have no choice but to incur the cost of towing vehicles, having extra security inside and out, and will have no choice but to seek legal counsel for remedy due to parking problems and loss of sales and profits and costs related to all. We after all still have to work and pay taxes, something that the developer will not do on these projects. I have a responsibility to our family shareholders, our employees' well-being, and our customers' confidence, and our surrounding neighbors' access to our business. I will do whatever it takes to protect my family's well-being. This is how we earn a living. Telling us to put up fences without even coming to look to see what will happen, telling us to sell out, these aren't solutions. There are options in building, there are options in building something reasonable that can keep our business happy, the developer happy, and the neighbors happy. Council has the opportunity to do so, and so we hope they will take this approach. We have a right to those stalls for our use and the right of access to our properties. Now imagine a scenario with London Road Market leaving the area. And it could happen. A nearly 100-year-old family-owned grocery store gone from Lethbridge approved this application, and that may happen. You will be the council attacking a family-owned business and the new tenants with no cars, with nowhere close to buy groceries, and the neighborhood, which has supported us for nearly 100 years without us. And you can explain that to the neighbors. I just want to mention one more thing. When the developer said they were out door knocking, they forgot to knock on my door. Since COVID, I have worked every day of the week from 9 o'clock till 7:00 in the evening, every day. I have not had a day off. No one has knocked on my door. I do fall asleep in my office once in a while, but it's not right that he says, "We've gone door-knocking." I've never met the man. It's just not right for him to be saying that. And I just want to close with, and if the owner of the property is here and the developer, they're still here, come on down on the next snowfall, and I will show you how to use a snow shovel on the business end, crutches and all, as we are tired of hearing the complaints due to your non-compliance with the snow removal bylaw. Unless, of course, they've asked for an exemption for that, too. Thank you.
Thank you. We do need, whether, not dependent on what side you're on, please, we need to keep decorum within chambers. Thank you. Oh, is it Herman? I'm sorry. My apologies. I've got Hernan. Okay? Thank you.
Gentlemen and ladies, I was thinking of keeping you 10 minutes longer, but since everything has expressed what I never could express like they did, I can only concur that we would really appreciate it what you did on 7th Avenue. You had made a little park out of three old buildings that were torn down. Why not ask even the construction company to make a little park there? That would solve all the problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Visser. Not here? All right. Now ask if there's anyone from, oh, Katerina?
I'm not Katerina.
Okay. Anyone from the floor, come up and speak. Sure. Thank you. And just state your name, please.
You bet. My name is Cara Ingleson. I am the property owner and business owner of 1909, which is the old cutting company. You guys saw me a year ago, roughly, give or take, presenting to have the bylaws, or sorry, the direct control uses changed on my property. I can 100% appreciate the concerns of the neighborhood and met with a lot of the neighborhood as well in the process, and I also understand both sides of this process. My concerns were also, have been echoed a ton. London Road touched base on the parking concerns. I emailed and spoke on the phone with, I think, Scott. On the phone one time, multiple emails expressing my concerns. His solutions were, well, maybe we can rent your parking stalls after hours, to which I replied, "Who's going to monitor the parking stalls? Somebody gets off work at 4:00 p.m., I don't want to have to monitor my stalls, nor do I want to cause the confrontation with having to have people towed. Also takes a ton of my time having to monitor my parking lot." I specifically chose the area because I love the history and the beauty of the home and the area. I think 100% we could benefit from there being other businesses in the area, but my concern is that it needs to be done appropriately, which I feel like has been expressed by the majority of people present. The style of the building, I think, is not conducive to the area as well. We've talked a lot about the history, trying to maintain that, as well as the size, parking. And I think if there was adequate solutions brought forth by the developer in regards to the parking, we've been met with the idea that there is not a decrease in vehicles being registered and people driving. I have seen a 25% increase in my sales from moving from downtown, where there was limited parking, to an area that has parking stalls. So that translates to me as a direct increase, right? I can see the difference having parking makes. I had conversations with the neighbors on how my parking was going to affect, if at all, if I was going to have overflow, conversations were had regarding that. So in my opinion, in my experience with the developers, there was not adequate solutions. There's a whole lot of numbers changing on sizes, et cetera. So I do have concerns, just as well as London Road Market does, in regards to how it will impact my business. If parking becomes an issue, it's taking away my clients from being able to. I have multiple moms who, the convenience of being able to pull in, use my ramp, easily access to get into the building, to shop with small children, strollers, as well as the accessibility, and having other people parking there and reducing that or not even having access to my lot, that I went through the process of rezoning for. It is very concerning to me. So those are my concerns.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else from the public which makes presentation? Please come forward. I know there's a few. Come forward, state your name.
Bob Huff, City Council Mayor. Good afternoon. My name is Bob Huff. My wife Debbie and myself have resided on 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 8 Avenue South in Lethbridge for close to 30 years. We have raised two kids and three dogs at this residence. It's a very friendly area, one where you get to know your neighbors. I am against bylaw 6460 and 6461 and any other rezoning bylaw that would permit construction of residential units that do not have at least one off-street parking spot for individual, for each individual resident unit. My reasoning for this opposition was outlined in the public hearing submission form that I submitted to the city of Lethbridge. Have a copy of it here. I think you've already got it. I'd like to add one more point, and this was already brought up. In the first week of December 2024, Calgary City Council defeated a motion to rezone a piece of land in Glenmore Landing to allow a density, high-density development of over 1,000 apartments going up, and they had on-street, off-street parking. The vote was 8 against and 6 for. It was defeated. It is my understanding that the size of the development was one of the reasons for voting down the proposed development. Calgary City Alderman Don McLean said, "This is too much density for a small area. This is a problem I see with bylaw 4640 and 4641. The density of the development is the problem. A smaller housing project should go ahead on these properties, one with adequate parking, one unit, one parking stall off-street. The proposed development will not fit. There is too much density in a small piece of land. When you vote on this proposal, please ensure you have all the facts, not just the information the developer has paid to produce." Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else? Please come to the mic and state your name.
Hello, my name's Jessica Page. I live at 533 13th Street South, which is directly beside one of the parcels and across from the other one, so I'm Kitty Corner to London Road Market. We've lived there for five years. When we bought our house, all those houses were for sale, so we knew they were all going to be bought and that some kind of development would go there, but we pictured maybe some townhouses, some row houses, and that was fine. I've I've lived in Victoria to Halifax, Toronto, Calgary, Canmore. I've lived in those buildings that are being proposed here. I understand urban living, but that is not the neighborhood that I now live in, and I don't think it's ready for that, particularly because of the parking issue as one. I am an urban professional, I'm an orthopedic surgeon, and although we love the walkable neighborhood we live in and we walk as much as we can, we ride our bikes with our kids, we drop them off to daycare in the summer, the rest of the time we have a car. And we live here so we can go to the mountains, we can do recreational things. People have cars. It's just not reasonable to think that half the people living there are not going to have a vehicle. I think the buildings are much too big, as has been said. I've been looking around at six-story buildings to see the footprint, and Scott has been very kind to share shadow studies with me. The five-story proposed building leaves my backyard in shadow basically at all times of year, especially in the winter, with a small window of sun in the summer. And honestly, if it was just about my property, I wouldn't be as concerned because we're a pretty flexible family, we love where we live, we would deal with it, but I just think it's bad for the neighborhood and completely unreasonable. We love where we live, and this is not a positive addition. And one thing that does concern me quite a bit is, I agree with the last speaker's comment that, or maybe it was a few speakers ago, that it seems like a foregone conclusion that it will be approved. When I saw an article about the TRIP grant for tax deferral being approved, I was somewhat shocked because nothing had actually come out publicly. We hadn't even heard from the developer what they wanted. So that was surprising to me. So I do not support this project in its current form. I support some density of housing there, some townhouses, like a fourplex or something with parking, but not the building that's proposed, either of them right now. Thank you.
Thank you. If I just, administration, I don't know if you smell, there's some electrical, something's burning. I don't know if anybody else can, out there can smell it yet?
It's your, it's your mother's.
It just sounds like electrical.
Can you all smell that?
Oh, yeah. It's electrical.
It's electrical and smells more on this side.
No, it's everywhere. Daryl can smell it, it's everywhere.
Oh, okay. Okay. I knew you were hot. I think I saved it.
An electric.
More fire.
Five-minute recess?
I'm sorry, we're just going to do a five-minute recess.